His voice changed. Thanks, Mike.
Oh, my God. I just go into the microphone.
We're all set on there whenever.
Yeah, I'm gonna wait until I see she round the corner and then we'll.
That trustee Row, Jeff Parker. All the essentials.
Gotcha. Everybody's on board. There, I heard the door.
There he is.
There we go. How you doing, Jeff?
I'm good. Thank you. How are you?
Okay, I call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees of the Town of Buena Vista. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Lacy.
Here.
Trustee Fay. Trustee McCrory.
Here.
Trustee Kniber.
Here.
Trustee Row.
Here.
Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Trustee Volpe.
Here.
Thank you all very much. Will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. I remind everyone to please silence or turn off your cellphone before you have the agenda. If there are any additions, deletions, questions on the agenda. If none, I would entertain.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Secondly, crazy. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Devin. Opposed? All right. Next is a consent agenda. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda? Everything we discussed, compensation. Philip brief. Resolution eleven. Very brief.
Very, very fun. Yeah, so ordinance number three. Oh, sorry, resolution eleven.
Yes, thank you. Document. And that's just.
Basically cleaning up ownership of a couple of outlots in Colorado Center.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
That had were intended to come to town earlier, but this is getting them over.
Getting it finally to transition.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on consent agenda or comments? Make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Cindy? Again, you guys are on a roll. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need to have a roll call vote on that.
Because of the.
Because of the ordinance.
The ordinance. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Hey, trustee Fay. Yes. Trustee McCrory.
Yes.
Trustee Kniber.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
And now you officially get a raise. No comment. It's gonna be silent. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I believe we had a couple that were wanting to make public comment. Otherwise, I will remind everyone that you can raise your hand in the chat box. You can also press star nine if you're on your phone and we will recognize you. Do we want to go ahead? Do we have? You've got a couple there, Philip, correct?
I believe, believe Dan has reached out to us through email, so.
Okay.
Let's go. Anybody raise their hand, but Dan, I'm gonna make you a. There we go. We're gonna allow you to talk.
And we'll go ahead and start off with you, Dan Hong, please, and state your name and address.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Dan Hong, two nine three eight three County Road three fifty-eight in Buena Vista. Good evening. About eight years ago, my wife Clarice and I partnered with the Town of BV and purchased a hockey rink. This rink was the practice rink from Lake Placid, New York, used by the nineteen eighty US men's Olympic hockey team. Since then, much thought has been given as to how this rink can be set up to allow the people of this community to skate. We've watched a similar effort take place in Salida. We've learned a lot from their efforts and through many discussions with one of their leaders, Alan Brown. What became clear: A simple outdoor rink isn't simple. It's expensive. It has limited use. It's weather dependent, and it probably wouldn't be economically viable. Members of our Miracle Rink group have gone over numerous options to make this vision happen. In doing our research, we came across what may be our ultimate opportunity. We found a site that could not only host our rink, but also Salida's rink. And FYI, a Salida nonprofit group just acquired the ice rink from Colorado College. Boards, glass, bleachers, scoreboard, and a massive chiller that can keep year-round ice. We're partnering with this Salida group to acquire a seventy-three thousand square foot building just south of Highway two ninety-one in Salida, near Salida. This building would house our rink, their rink, fitness rooms, basketball, soccer, dance, lacrosse, gymnastics, wrestling, and numerous other options. It would be a massive recreation center available to the communities of BV, Salida, Pontius Springs, and Chafee County. It would add revenue to these communities. It would be a landmark facility that would draw people from across the nation for high-altitude training in addition to just visiting an amazing facility in an amazing location. I'm standing before you today with the intention of establishing and maintaining an open line of communication with you. I don't want you to feel left out. Up to this point, this project has been kept very quiet as we work to secure and lock down the real estate. Once that's done, we will go full public and let everyone know about this amazing project. Details of the deal are still being determined. Ownership looks like one of two options. Our nonprofit raises funds for the down payment and High Country Bank holds the note. We finance the payments. The other option is private investment. Currently, we have several options that we're actively investigating. We're looking to close by June or July this year. Development will be through a phased approach. We're talking with Chafee County in regards to providing affordable housing on this location of roughly fourteen acres. An urban land trust may be utilized. We're also working with GOCO and acquiring grants. For this, we may need a government agency to sponsor it. We're interested in not tying up BV or Salida's upcoming GOCO projects, so we may utilize Chafee County as our sponsor. Still much to be determined. This project would be a dream come true and providing so much recreation opportunity for Chafee and surrounding counties. We hope you share our vision for making this a reality. As we move forward, I'd like to be your point of contact with this project. Please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
Did you have someone else up there, Philip? Did I see?
Do you want me to call her? I think anyone else that would like to speak in public comment, you can raise your hand in the Zoom chat.
I don't see anymore on the Zoom chat. Do you, Philip?
I do not.
Okay, so we have a person here in person that would like to speak in public comment. Mark Jenkins, would you please state your name and address? Yeah, we do. We want to see you.
Mark Jenkins, three fourteen South San Juan, Buena Vista. First of all, thank you, Board and staff, for inviting Sue and I to the work session tonight. It was nice to get back into it and get involved, and thank you for letting us participate. First of all, thank you, staff, for your continued hard work and forward thinking. We'd like to thank Philip for his amazing leadership. And we are so lucky to have you, everyone on your team. Look forward to working with everyone in the next four years. And one more thank you. Paula, for always being there to answer all of my questions during the candidate process. And you're amazing. Thank you. Second, thank you, Board, Sitting Board, for your dedication and service, and Gina for stepping in into the intern position. I look forward to serving with the continuing Board members and the mayor. And finally, special thanks to trustee Volpe and Mayor Lacy. Your dedication and service will always be remembered and appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Martin. You speak loudly of everything, everything we think about here on this, about our staff and everything else. Thank you very much. And to Dan, that's quite an interesting, that's big, very big. So we'll be in touch. I'm sure we'll keep in touch, that kind of thing. Our contact will be the rec department.
The rec department has been in regular communication. Earl, serving as a rec project manager, is continuing to get your primary point of contact.
Great. Great. That's really exciting at this point. Let's hope it follows through. That is, I end this portion of public comment. Next item is staff reports. Administrator.
Right. Thank you all. Lots of good things on the agenda, so I won't tie this up too much, but there's a lot going on here. So I've tried to restructure my report a little bit. Hopefully, it's easier to use every time I mess with it. If it, if it is confusing, don't hesitate to let me know. But reorganizing kind of key dates, several work sessions coming up. I'll let you kind of read through those and mark your calendars. But do want to highlight that we are now set up for a work session next week as well to have a presentation of the draft water rate study, which comes on the heels of all the water discussions we've been, we've been having. So I know that's definitely of interest. And then we are looking at a board strategic planning session, which our incoming trustees will be invited to as well. So looking forward to that. March twelfth, that's a Saturday, and we'll probably take the morning and then have a lunch kind of approach like we did this past year. So good things happening there. I wanted to make sure the board's aware of current happenings with our municipal courts. So I'm gonna try to include updates there on a fairly regular basis. But you'll see there that there are some, some changes in the state law that will, we will see a ripple effect down to our municipal court, especially when it comes to recouping fines, which can be a challenge for municipal court system. So I wanted you all to be aware of that. It's a, it's a change where essentially, we used, they used to be able, the DMV used to be able to suspend a driver's license for unpaid municipal court fees and settle things tied to municipal court. Unfortunately, in my opinion, humble opinion, that has changed. So it's going to make recouping fees even harder in the future. So we might see that as an impact to revenue. We also might come forward with some new ideas on ways that we can be innovative in that space. One of those is utilizing our setup we have here with the Zoom system and offering participation for municipal court through remote participation. So that's something our judge is looking at, and we'll work with them to to set that up if that is something that they do decide to start.
As a cost-saving, basically, or.
To get more participation in the court.
Participation. Thank you. Okay.
Moving on, I've also added an HR, human resources update. So you can see there different things in terms of like how we're doing on hiring for open positions. So I'll, I'll let you see that on an ongoing basis. Always feel free to ask me questions on any of that. We did meet with the BV School District Committee that was a follow-up with our joint work session in January, looking at properties and the childcare space that's tied to the Carbon Street project. So outcome of that, there, I highlighted in blue, but the school district did express an interest in potentially participating or partnering with us on the Carbon Street project. They have started to share what their space requirements would to handle the number of students that are coming through their system. So that's something that we will continue to engage with them on. And then there is also a decision to try to move forward, finally, with updating the IGA tied to the school and dedication and fee and lieu, which is something that we collect at the time of subdivision and development. So a little bit of change will come of that if we can get the countywide municipalities and county and school districts to agree to move forward in one step. So you'll probably see that come forward relatively soon in the, in, in the shape of an ordinance, an updated IGA and an updated fee schedule. Let's see, I mentioned last time, Chafee Waste Diversion and the Garner Project. I've mentioned that last time, but I do want to emphasize that April eleventh is going to be a work session at the county commissioners' level, and we definitely would like our municipalities to tune into that and, and kind of hear what's going on. And if you have questions, it's a work session. I think they'll accommodate some discussion. Let's see. Chafee Housing Authority, Becky is here with us tonight on some other topics, but I do want to emphasize that the discussion about potential ballot question coming up in November is still ongoing. There is a subcommittee of the Housing Authority Board and staff that are contemplating some of the details and potential process for that. And I believe in March, we'll get together as administrators with that committee to provide input, see where they're at. And then I would anticipate you all will hear an update soon after and be able to speak into what your desires are for that. Let's see here. Franchise agreement with Sangre de Cristo Electric. We did, we had a really good meeting with their board and some of their staff. Trustee Fay and trustee Swisher joined us and good discussion, good review of the, the. And trustee Volpe was there, too.
I couldn't interrupt your.
I know, you're right. I did it in that meeting, too. I'm sorry. My apologies. There as well.
And I know I'm on my way out.
You're gone.
Is it April yet? So good, good direction, I think, or some additional input on that. We're really trying to get that before you and draft form, legal agreement, draft form in March, so that we can try to wrap that up by the end of March. Police Station, we closed on the new property. I think, no, I didn't mention that last time. That happened between then and now. So we do own the property off of County Road three seventeen. Very excited about that. And let's see, Arizona Trail and Bridge, CDOT has provided the final environmental clearance. They did like everything that was presented to them, finally. So we are, we have final docs, documents, and we hope to see that out for bid a couple of weeks, Joel. Something like that. So never say never. Now, let's see. And then finally, I will wrap up. There was the San Luis Valley Transportation Planning, the TRP meeting this past week. As a reminder, for, for anyone that doesn't recognize all those, that mouthful of acronyms, that's the collection of governing bodies that speak into the priorities for, for each region and the state. We're part of a region that goes all the way down to the Durango area. It's kind of an odd combination of places, but that's what we've got. But essentially, we participate on that to speak into the priorities in our area when it relates to CDOT funding and projects. And that is how we secured funding and a timeline for the Baylor Highway twenty-four intersection improvements that are funded and will be starting design here soon with construction starting next year. The Steel Intersection, which is kind of the great drive area of Highway twenty-four, we continue to advocate for that, and I think we secured that in what they're referring to as years five through ten, which equate to twenty twenty-seven to twenty thirty-two. So that's still looking promising to receive some funding for improvements in that area. And with that, I've lost my place in my notes, and I'll stop there and take any questions.
Questions or comments for Philip?
Quick comment. Lot, lot in that report.
Sorry.
Lot in that report. Going back up here, I can't find it, but on the sharing the sick leave, that is a very good idea.
Thank you. Resources.
Yes, I think that was a very good idea.
Thank you.
It can definitely help a family out that needs it and.
Thank you. Any other questions for Philip? Thank you, Philip. I know there'll be more later.
Great.
Next is Town Treasurer, Michelle.
Had a little emergency today. Michelle is out.
Okay.
Traveling, so forgot to mention that.
That's all right.
So yes, her report is on page forty-two. This is her typical monthly report. The thing she did want to highlight is that the new budget book is now posted online, and she's got a link to that. So for twenty twenty-two budget, that is now available to the public through this link here. So that's great. Otherwise, I'll take, I'll field any questions you may have for the treasurer.
And I'll go ahead and push for her ClearGov, you know, website, everybody, you know.
Yes.
She loves her ClearGov. Everybody go for it. Any other questions? Michelle, I hope everything's well. So thank you very much, Philip. Next will be Chief. Police Chief.
Dean, how are we doing? Thank you. Good to see everybody. I'll go through my report real quick. It's a brief one. We've been attending several meetings related to the new building. It's been really great to work with Joseph Tipo and the contractor company. We've had meetings this week about types of furniture and IT discussions for some of the new technology we're gonna get in the building. So we're really excited about that. We're finding we're pretty behind the curve on some technology. So some of the things that they're offering us, we never had anything like that. So we're pretty excited some of the features that we're gonna have to help us out with, with our duties. At our last team meeting, we did our SIRS A mandated trainings. And then we get some other trainings throughout the year that also help cover SIRS, SIRS A and post mandates. And I know at the last meeting we were at, we discussed mental wellness issues. And SIRS actually pays for an app for police officers called Cortico, which we got for all of our officers now. And they can access that twenty-four seven, and it has all kinds of resources for officer fitness, health, nutrition, mental wellness, all kinds of things. So that's really neat. We did our ground fighting class on February second, and then we have another one, round two, on February sixteenth, so next Wednesday. And we use the old BV fire building for that. There's a couple pictures attached. It was a good time, really good training. I think the pictures kind of highlight, though, that's why we have a need for a new training facility. We have to put out some kind of jigsaw puzzle mats type that, like that, roll around and make sure people are standing by so we don't roll off into the concrete or into a brick wall. So having a little bit better training area is gonna be nice for us, too. So that's something we're excited about. We've been getting some of our post grants that I applied for in twenty twenty-one. We got our post academy grant, which paid for an officer's academy. And then we also got a grant from the Feds for optics for our patrol rifles. So we'll be implementing those new rifles soon. Sergeant Garcia did a great job getting those, and we just got light systems for those, too. So that's another really nice upgraded piece of equipment that we needed. And the last thing, State of Colorado in twenty twenty implemented a House Bill twenty-two seventeen, which was the police reform bill. And there's a lot of mandates that go into effect on that over the months. So one of them, we have to do citizen contact forms. So whenever we initiate contact with a citizen, we have to collect some data, which goes to the state. And it's to help us ensure that we're not, you know, profiling or, you know, conducting improper contacts and things. So initially, that was, wasn't supposed to take effect until July of twenty twenty-three, but around January first, they sprung it on us that now that's going into effect April first of this year. So we had been all along collecting that data just on pen and paper. And this week, I met with a guy with a company called SmartForce. I'll kind of show you. I don't know if you can see it on my phone here. But they created an app that will help officers collect that information. And April first, all of that has to be sent to the state every month. So this app is gonna help us be able to do that. And it's got a lot of nice features like a digital business card and things like that, where people can scan a QR code and then get the officer's contact information if they have questions or anything like that. So yeah, it's, it's a new world with a lot of nice technology that we're able to use in policing now. So we're excited about that. That's all I have. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dean. Is there any questions for Chief? Yes, go ahead, Dave.
If it's not too difficult, Chief, could I ask for a brief description of the locations, the C one, three, four, and five that I see the call statistics by location number on page fifty-four?
Yeah, that, that was kind of interesting. I don't think that had been included in that fashion in the other armed reports. So those are areas of the county. So I'm not sure what exactly each one equates to, but it's kind of humorous that C four is calls in Buena Vista. So that's why there's one big blue square. So the C one, C three, C four, and C five would be other parts of the county, as I understand.
Okay, okay.
You can get a breakdown of that, but it, it's a good question because we're, now that we've changed our fire and emergency service data, or sorry, coverage, we're collecting dispatch information a little in a bit different way. So I'm gonna start representing this in my reports from time to time, so you can see not only BV PD, but how fire and EMS are responding. And for, for, just heads up for when you see that, for EMS and fire, it will only be the C four, the Town of Buena Vista, which.
Four is town?
Correct. And then, but for BV PD, we're gonna show it all because it is our police department responding in town, but they also get called outside of town for, for certain things.
For assistance and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I just have a comment. I, I want to reiterate that I really like your reports, Chief. You know, they're so much more informative than what we used to get, and I really appreciate finding out what kind of training you're doing. And, and that is a big change to move that deadline up so much for you, but I'm glad you're ready for it.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. It's an important issue, and we're happy to comply. But I know a lot of the agencies around the state are kind of scrambling to try to, you know, keep up with those standards. So this company, SmartForce, I have to give a shout out to them. They, they've really come up with a good tool. And right now, it's free. So it helps us in a lot of, I think there's about thirty agencies, they said, that are starting to use it. So if anybody's curious in how it works, feel free to stop by. I'm glad to give you a demonstration.
Thank you, Chief. Next is another Chief. Chief Burcom.
Good evening, everybody. So I'll go through this pretty quickly. So inspections, Kira's making great cross-progress on the inspections. We realize some of the businesses haven't been inspected in a while, so she's really focusing on education as opposed to just enforcement. So far, it's been very positive with that. Also, if you guys, if you guys know the development and everything in town, as well as the county, that's what Kira's in charge of. So she's pretty busy with all this right now. She was happy to work with, with the town on the police department. We're excited to have some neighbors here in the, the near future. Another thing is we're working on streamlining the plan review process across the county. So trying to get on the same page with, with both towns. Pontius Springs, Buena Vista, as well as the county, so we can just streamline the whole thing for her. So we're looking forward to moving forward with that. As far as our recruitment, bringing in volunteers and new members, our candidate academy, we concluded our first academy of the year. We got a new rookie member sworn in, our station four, which is Pontius Springs. We concluded our first academy of the year. Uh, we got a new rookie member sworn in our station four, which is Pontius Springs. And we're already planning our next one. So the constant process, we, we evolved to kind of shorten it to be able to get people in the station sooner and do the training within the stations. February third, we started our hazmat class, hazmat operations. We've actually have thirteen people in the hazmat operations class. Once they complete that, March third, they'll go into firefighter one and that'll be a three month uh, training, which is every Thursday and every other Saturday. So it's a pretty intensive process. It's a twelve credit hour course in college. Um, so we're excited to get everybody going through that. On January twenty ninth, we hosted a uh, mask and COVID test distribution event. One was at McPhail New Park, the other was in Pontius Springs. Uh, we had quite a few people show up. So we, we participate or participated with the state program. Uh, they sent us, we actually have three thousand masks. Uh, both N ninety five and surgical masks. We can get about five per household per month. As well as COVID tests, we did get a surge of two hundred and fifty COVID tests. We ended up a hundred and fifty of those uh, to families. So so that was a great event. As we move forward in the future, if anybody needs any of them, they can always stop by our station and pick up ass. Uh, the surrounding areas, we're uh, very excited to announce the twenty twenty two chief of chips communities that we've selected for this year. Uh, April, we will do game trail, the, the east side of it. So last year we did kind of the upper west side of it. Uh, based on the different uh, trees, we had spruce um, up above, pinging needs to be cut early. So we're doing that in April. Um, followed by Meadow Lake Estates, which is north of town, three L, four L, Piti. Um, Cedar Ridge is in the center part of the county and then Buffalo Hills, three eighty four, three fifty six area. You guys notice it's really focused around the north end this year. Uh, Buffalo Hills borders up next to the town. So this is great. If you don't know what chief of just program is, basically we, we target these communities for people to go out and do mitigation work around their homes. And so they go out, do the mitigation work, they put piles out by the roadway and we come up and pick them up. Last year we were grant funded to uh, purchase mini excavators. We use that along with our four mitigation trailers. We take all that slash out of there, um, ultimately trying to help reduce the uh, the danger of fire spread. And so all these are based around either the watershed of the town and bordering the town. So we're excited about being able to partner with those. Also, we're pre-planning, uh, another exciting project is Game Trail and Ventures Limited are working together to do a large fuel break project uh, between the forests and the community. Uh, so we actually uh, went up there and snowshoed up. Uh, there's a lot of snow up there. So shoot up there to evaluate where the piles are gonna be. Uh, they're gonna bring in loggers to do the piles, all the slash leftovers will be piled and we're gonna burn it, but part of our pre-planning is making sure it's in a safe place to be able to burn. Uh, going forward with that. Uh, Pontius Spring Station is still underway. COVID and everything else is postponement project, which should have been moving out in already. Uh, but we're confident, we're gonna, we're gonna get it done this year. Uh, wanted to share with you guys some of the twenty twenty one stats. Uh, so we had five hundred and nineteen incident responses. Ninety three of them were in the town of Buena Vista, eighty four since signing the E, the uh, IGA. Uh, and then we broke it down, two hundred and twenty eight of our calls were north of Centerville excluding the town and a hundred and ninety three south of Centerville. So with those call staffs, one of the things that no medical response was kind of a concern, we've actually um, I think through this has improved the relationship with EMS. So some of our call volume increase has been because they're more willing to call us. We've been running more EMS calls than we anticipated, both in the town and in the county. Uh, which ultimately this is better service to the community as a whole. So we're very happy with that. Um, then we will look at the, you know, hundred and ninety three falls south of Centerville. And then remember with that is we have Monarch Pass. Uh, for instance, yesterday we were actually on Monarch Pass for seven hours for a semi accident. So uh, which is kind of, kind of how it goes. Some of these are longer, some of these are shorter. Uh, last year we had two thousand five hundred twenty six hours spent operating on emergency scenes total. And three thousand eight hundred and thirty total hours spent training uh, for these emergency incidents through our different academies, our regular weekly trainings. Um, down below, you can kind of see the breakdown uh, in your report. You own, you own, this is the town of Buena Vista itself, the calls to respond it on, the breakdown of all that. Uh, one thing I wanted to add, you know, I said on here, you can always contact me by email. If you've got any questions about stuff. Also, if you're into social media, we, we try to post a lot of our trainings and ongoings on there. So if you're interested in, in what we're doing and trainings and how we train, that's a good way to get it further information. So thank you. And if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, chief. Uh, questions, question for chief? I am impressed. That's a, a very conclusive report. You guys are hopping. That's all I can say. Got a lot going on.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. Uh, next is airport manager, Jack.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. My report's on page sixty two. Uh, we're going to do a pretty quick report. Um, operation wise, we've got a call from Leonardo, the UK division. Looks like they're gonna be coming in this spring. Also another the folks, the Italian division that was in last spring is also planning on coming. We haven't got hard dates yet, but it's looking like we'll have some. Business wise, the grant for twenty twenty two uh, April rehab design phase has been signed, approved by the FAA. Tomorrow, we have a kickoff session with Dibble and FA. Dibble will be at the airport and then rest will be virtual. Operation wise, I'm not gonna go too much in detail. You can see the numbers because you're gonna see this very shortly in our year end report. But we're not doing too bad. Uh, you can see the numbers slightly lower than last January, especially in fuel sales. That's because last January, we had testing. Uh, this year we didn't have testing this time of year, but still pretty good numbers for this time of year. Item last, a little something else, we uh, the airport have just installed the media center up on our second floor conference room, very similar to what you have right here. Little simpler, not as many wires and gadgets, but certainly can be used by staff, trustees, if they want to come out and yeah, do a presentation or virtual meetings. We have a large screen and everything, very similar to this uh, more than welcome to use it. That's my report and you'll see us shortly again later on today. Any questions?
Jack, any questions for Jack on this? And we will, we'll see you for at least a half hour on the next one, huh?
Yes.
Thanks, Jack. First is a business item. And we welcome this anytime we can get it. Um, update on the AMI and housing affordability. Becky.
Hi, good evening, trustees and staff. It is a pleasure to be here. I'm Becky Gray. I'm the director of housing for the Chaffey Housing Authority. And um, we're at a really exciting time in the state of Colorado right now. Last year, there was some legislation passed that encouraged local jurisdictions to look at their land use code and their development processes, making changes to uh, make development a little bit easier to happen and more affordable in those processes. And I really just appreciate the work that town's done um, thus far to address those topics. And you've had some really good conversations about that. In addition to that encouragement, the state um, has a budget for affordable housing this year that has increased from roughly thirty five to forty million dollars to four hundred million dollars. It's a pretty significant jump. Um, it's not gonna last forever. However, it gives us a really exciting time to look at where that intersection is between local policy, private development and public input into that development, which is how we draw down um, that funding. So I wanted just to offer you that kind of high level context where we're at in our state. The challenge is huge, but I think our opportunity is also really huge right now. And before we walk into um, the, the weeds, so to speak, I wanted to make sure that we remembered that that, those opportunities are out there. So as we're engaging and as Joseph and, and team in the planning department are engaging with developers and working with the housing authority to have negotiations and, and conversations about how to make the developments underway more affordable. Good to remember that, that that's the environment that we're sitting in. So I wanted to talk about development and how the cost of development is impacted, what that does to rents at the, at the end result, rents or purchase prices. For this conversation, I chose to focus on rents because it seems to simplify the conversation. Um, and what that means to our ability to negotiate with developers as well and how, how we advocate for affordable housing. So I shared with you, Philip, on the next slide. Um, I shared with you in your packet what I call our housing continuum. So I'm not gonna talk about this slide in great detail because what I've done in the rest of this presentation is pull out each of those columns, which represents an income category. And we'll kind of drill down on what in that income app category is affordable, how it's reached through development and what kind of tools we can use as the public engaging with private developers to um, hit those affordability, affordability levels. So everything you see on here is gonna be in the, the next slides. Um, and I just really wanted to kind of break it out. So in, for preparation of, for this conversation, I used a tool that the Department of Local Affairs Division of Housing offers, and there's a link there. Uh, unfortunately, it's not a live link, but it can take you to this tool. It's really fun because you can pretend like you're the developer. You can set your own AMI levels. You can um, say some toggle switches to determine if land was given to the development, if tax credits were used in the development, et cetera. And it lets you see how that impacts the cost of the development and therefore the end result, meaning the rents, et cetera. Basically, it costs the same to build fifty units of market rate housing as it does to build fifty units of affordable housing. So I think that's really an important baseline to remember when we're talking about housing affordability and development is that the costs are fixed. The thing that's variable is the rents and the, I'm just gonna focus on rents. So rents are purchase price, but rent. Typically, developers bring equity to a project, much like um, if we are uh, building a single family home as an individual, you're going to bring a certain amount of cash to the project and the rest of it's filled with debt. So equity plus debt equals a total project cost. Um, as we scroll through these slides, you'll see the representation of a building that equals the total budget of a development. Equity is brought in first. So what kind of cash can we bring into the deal? And then what kind of debt is required depends, to, to finish the deal, to pay for the full project. That debt needs to be paid off somehow. And how that's paid off is through your purchase prices or your rents. So when we're holding rents permanently affordable, we're lessening the amount of income we can put towards that debt. And therefore, as a developer, you're lessening the amount you can take on in debt, right? You can't take on more than you're able to pay off. So it's really important to, to remember that that gap is usually filled by debt. But in affordable housing developments, you have to fill that gap with something different because we're not gonna be able to charge market rate rents to pay off our debt. So one way that the public sector, us, can bring equity to a project is through the local land use policies that you all are already evaluating. Density, increased density is a big part of it, um, deferring and waiving fees, um, using tax credits, partnering with housing authorities and other nonprofits to bring in grants or donations. Um, and then the donation of land, which, which was really, um, you all have walked through that process already of very evaluating what kind of publicly, public land you own and how it might move into a development. So the next slide, then, this is a slide dedicated to the top, to the AMI level of thirty percent or below our area median income. So that's, this whole slide is dedicated to that. You see the multifamily house over there on the right hand corner and you can see there's a thin strip of glue at the bottom. That's the equity that we can identify in a total budget of an affordable project at that low of an income range. So to put that in perspective, that's an income of less than about fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. That's typically um, equated to social security disability income, retirement income and, and other very fixed incomes. So typically this um, tenant type is not on the trajectory to increase their earnings, right? An affordable housing expense per month um, in this bracket is about less than four hundred dollars a month. That's a very, very low for this community for sure. And that is about, represents about nine percent of the Chaffey County workforce. When I say Chaffey County workforce, I'm getting this data from the um, Department of Labor at our state level. And that means that these are people bringing home a paycheck who get a W two at the end of the year. Okay, so it could be that a portion of this population uh, looks like my teenage daughter, who, right, who's working enough to buy her own car, et cetera. But it can also mean that a portion of this income is um, receiving a paycheck through social security. Typically, to make this kind of housing, or let me, let me back up and say the typical housing products for this income bracket are listed up there in the, the upper right hand corner. So that's like emergency overnight shelters. It's transitional housing, transitional meaning you're not staying there forever and you have someone holding your hand, um, helping you improve your situation while you're there. Or permanent supportive housing, which means there's not really an expectation that that tenant type leaves that housing environment. Rather, they have supportive services brought to them. In order to make this kind of housing, partners are absolutely essential. Um, the housing authority, of course, I'm gonna be at the top of every one of this list because I think that's good marketing. Um, Chaffey Hospitality is a, an, an outcome of our homeless coalition. So they're currently housing unsheltered people in two different basements in Salida and in hotels if there are families with children. Low income tax credit developers are a major player in this field. So much like uh, collegiate commons was built with low income tax credits. Permanent supportive housing is also built with low income tax credits. And we use private activity bonds to also um, bring the equity line up a little bit so that we don't have to have the rest of it in debt. Also, there's funding through HUD, um, through the Emergency Solutions Grant and then partnering with our Council of Governments, the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Government serves this region, but also the Northwest Colorado Council of Government serves this region. So to reach this income point, those are the partners that we need to work with. And uh, those are the type of funding that we need to fill that massive gap so that we can actually build housing to reach that price point. Thank you, Philip. Next slide. So this income level at the top is between thirty one to fifty percent AMI. And you can see that, that is a, an income of between roughly fifteen five to um, twenty five seven in terms of annual income. That represents close to thirteen percent of our workforce. And uh, uh, an affordable housing expense um, ranges for that range from just under four hundred to about six fifty a month. So you can see the blue line at the bottom of that multifamily is bigger, right? So we have a little less gap. We have equity that we can bring to that. Um, but still the rents are so low that it's hard to pay off the debt that's required for the rest of it. So you fill that gap with other funding streams, very similar to the first slide that we just saw, very similar partners to the first slide that we just saw with the addition of Habitat for Humanity. They reach this income bracket through their model as well as the Salida Housing Development Corporation. That's a, a, a nonprofit corporation in, based out of Salida that has one tax credit property. Um, they also have some land where another tax credit property is going to potentially go. And they have no um, political boundaries. So even though Salida's in their name, that's an organization that can reach this part of the county as well. The next slide, Philip, we go up to fifty one to sixty percent AMI. So you can see that little, the, the blue filling up that housing, um, housing icon a little bit more. Not a lot changes to reach this income bracket. It's still a huge gap. This is a very hard, these last three that we just talked about, very hard housing product to produce with private market. In fact, you don't really see private developers listed. It's really all through public entities partnering with the state and federal resources and those private light tech developers um, to, to get this kind of model done. Chaffey Housing Trust does come into play here because their homeownership model can reach down towards fifty percent of um, our AMI. The way that uh, Reed does that for the housing trust is he brings in additional grants, um, additional funding sources to help fill that equity gap up so that the debt that's required at that price point is small enough that we can, that he can fill it through their purchase prices. I'm gonna pause here for a second. What, either one, on private activity bonds, I think it's important to recognize. I'm going to pause here for a second, what either one, on private activity bonds, I think it's important to recognize that the population in Chaffee County has grown to a point where the state I gotta get the words right, I get them mixed up. The state authorizes our county to issue private activity bonds based on our population size. So this year, our issuing authority is one million sixty three thousand dollars and some odd dollars, I forgot the smaller amounts. So those are bonds that we can issue, turn them into cash, put the cash into the project, the project repays the bonds. So it's a it's a financing tool that Chaffee County didn't really have up until about two thousand nineteen. And we haven't had a product yet under development that fit that need. But I believe as we're getting more mature in our engagement with developers and our engagement with public private partnerships, those private activity bonds will come into play. So just kind of keep that in mind. It fills a little bit of that gap. So now we're up to sixty one to eighty percent AMI. So that's a salary range of thirty thousand nine hundred to forty one two hundred. It's still, if you turn that into hourly rate, it's still under twenty dollars an hour. So when we talk to a lot of our local businesses, we hear that businesses are trying to hire in at about twenty dollars an hour or more. They can, depending on their business models. So this represents close to seventeen percent of our workforce in Chaffee County. Permanently affordable rental housing is really the most appropriate housing product for this income bracket. What I mean by permanently affordable rental housing is housing that is affordable to these standards and that isn't going to be able to change hands into the private market and become then unaffordable, right? So that's usually done through deed restrictions or land use restriction agreements. Land use restriction agreements tend to expire after a certain amount of time. Collegiate Commons has one, we we call them Luras because acronyms, everybody loves them. So collegiate commons is an excellent example of a permanently affordable rental housing project that has a Laura. So it's going to be permanently affordable for X number of years. It will eventually expire. Typically, those low income tax credit projects are purchased by another low income tax credit developer, new credits, they renovate. The Laura extends for another thirty years. So they're usually on a revolving basis like that. But it is something to keep in mind because it doesn't have to be purchased by a low income tax credit developer. It can be purchased off the private market. So when we see an asset like the one sitting over there in collegiate commons, it's housing so many people. It's good to have that long range strategy of how might a public entity like a housing authority step in should it ever come on the market and make sure we maintain that permanent affordability. Same partners that you see there. Not a lot changes, except for that gap is getting smaller, so the rents can go up because the rents are going up a little bit more. On the next slide, Philip, we go from eighty to a hundred percent AMI. So that's forty one thousand two hundred to fifty one thousand five hundred. We're getting close to about a twenty five dollar an hour wage, if we want to put it in hourly terms. Again, this is about sixteen percent of our population in our in our workforce. And the rents are getting a little bit closer to market rate. So we're a little bit closer being about just over a thousand dollars a month to almost thirteen hundred dollars a month. The right kind of housing products to fit this income bracket are typically deed restricted owner occupied homes. So this is where Chaffee Housing Trust has a really great foothold on this market and a really great strategy on how to address this housing type. Missing middle housing. So this is where density comes into play on the private market. If we can build a fourplex instead of a single family home, there's more opportunity for income coming in off that development to pay off the debt that you see. So that's where density comes in. Missing middle refers to any type of housing from single family homes to your multifamily housing complexes. So duplexes, triplexes, quads, six plus six plexes, small cottage environments, et cetera. Supportive homeownership also comes into play here. Again, Chaffee Housing Trust plays a big role there. What I mean by supportive is finding the down payment assistance to assist people, helping them clean their credit so they can get to a point where they can purchase housing. And then also homeowner education. I had my dad, which was great because when the water pipes broke, I had someone I could call as a homeowner. That's very, it's difficult when you're moving from renting to owning to understand how to maintain your home and how to 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 keep it habitable. So that's part of the supportive homeownership. This is the first place where market rate developers show up in our partner list. That's because the rents are higher and if we have the increased density and we may be able to pay the debt on that project. Division of Housing, Colorado Housing Finance Authority comes into play here. Those both have grant products and lending products that fit in this AMI range. And then I also included traditional lenders, so it's our local bankers. If they feel confident in the net operating income on a project like this, they may lend for a development. But also, community development financial institutions, we call them CDFIs. Small backstory there. Banks are required to contribute under the Community Reinvestment Act a certain portion of their financial income to lower income communities. So sometimes that looks like financial literacy courses. Sometimes it looks like community engagement strategies or investing in actual development. Large banks, the big national ones typically don't do that kind of community outreach. And so they give their CRA requirements, the amount of money that they need to reinvest to their communities to a community development financial institution. The big banks then are done, they they have their credits taken care of, they've met their requirements, and then the CDFIs take all the risk by lending out to these more really tight developments instead of instead of market rate developments. So they're really good partners in this arena. And fortunately, we have a lot that are interested in Chaffee County. So we have that going for us. If you go one more slide, Philip, we reach up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. So that's everything from fifty one five to sixty one thousand eight hundred in an income. So we're pushing thirty dollars an hour here in terms of an hourly wage. This is twelve percent of our population and the affordable housing expense, so whether that's your rent or your mortgage is just under thirteen hundred a month to just over fifteen hundred a month. So we're getting much closer to market right now. I think we can recognize that we've seen some things advertised in this range. And you can see why the gap there that we have to fill is much smaller. So the income coming in off those properties can pay off that developer's debt. This is where market rate developers, I think, are essential in our conversation on how we create more affordable housing for our local workforce. In addition to the work that you all are doing with your land use codes and your building codes for increasing density and infill redevelopment, et cetera, that that's a major part of the blue portion of that housing budget, right? It 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 equates directly to equity in a project. And so that really helps us get to the point where we can work and lean more on our private market developers to help fill this housing need here. And then we can go to the next slide, Philip. Will you do, will you do a fun thing and toggle back? And look at how many houses, how many windows are in this housing unit? And now go up to this one, we've reduced the number of houses, right? There's a tendency as you get into these higher income brackets to have more single family homes. So that's kind of what that's representing. You'll also notice there's no more gap. Right? We're able to recoup those costs for our debt by having higher rents. So in this income bracket, which reaches up to a hundred and three thousand, also representing sixteen percent of our workforce. If you noticed, each of these income brackets are almost equal in terms of our workforce. These are very much what we're seeing in market rate rents, so fifteen hundred dollars up to twenty five hundred dollars, a little over. This is definitely where market rate developers play a role. I did leave Chaffee Housing Authority on there, not just because it's good marketing, but also because we can play a role, particularly if it is a multifamily, a multifamily housing product for rent. If it's a for rent, multi housing family product, multifamily housing product, the Housing Authority can be part owner in this product. As little as one tenth of one percent. And what that does is it eliminates property taxes for that product. That fills up, that fills up the blue, right? That adds more equity to the project because you're not paying those property taxes. You can put it right back into your operating expenses to pay off your debt. So that's why I include that here. I don't see Chaffee Housing Authority trying to develop at this price point. But it is definitely a tool in your toolbox as you talk to developers and they're bringing projects to you to understand that that's one of the trade offs we can make. Division of Housing and Colorado Housing Finance Authority are starting to bring their funding up to these levels. Not across the board in the state, more in response to mountain communities who are saying we, we, we need higher AMIs in their in their income cutoffs. Simply because the sixty percent and below are so very low, it leaves out a lot of our workforce. And then I think the last slide, we have over two hundred, you'll notice a much smaller house, it's probably single family. They can afford nice bikes and dogs. And we can really lend this over to market rate developers working with you all as a local jurisdiction and using traditional funding sources. I would say, however, that it is also still appropriate to consider deed restricting some of these units. The price point still may be high because we're looking at, you know, a much higher earning power. But with the way the Chaffee County market is going, even if this price point fits this income bracket right now, the demand on our market is so great from outside sources that the turnover of this housing product could make it so that it's not affordable for two hundred percent AMI anymore. So please keep that in mind as you walk through these conversations. I also think it just, and even in listening to your conversation earlier about water, missing middle housing products are very important in this market as well. Just because we're talking about over two hundred percent AMI doesn't mean that we need a twenty five hundred square foot house for that market. There are plenty of people in this income bracket that are looking for smaller, more dense housing because they want to spend their times on that on that bike and walking that dog and doing fun things instead of sitting in a house. So I think on the last page, I just said some of the key takes away is that the lower we want the rents to be, the bigger that gap in funding is going to be. That's the gap that's hard to fill with debt because we're not bringing in enough income on those products to pay the debt off. So just remember that kind of scale as you're as you're having these conversations about development, about affordable housing. The lower we want to bring the rents, the more we're going to have to do to fill that gap. And that is a collaborative we needing to fill that gap. The only way to increase the net operating income is to increase the purchase price for the rents. So on a project, that's the only way you're going to increase your income. The only way to reduce the debt is through additional equity. And again, I reiterated some of the local actions that can be taken that help reduce that gap by way of like transferred equity, so to speak, and that's through donated land, reduce fees. Increased density is the one I hear mostly from developers. If I can squeeze two or three more units in there, I can make a pencil. If I can't have those extra couple of units, then I need something else to fill that gap. And then gap funding, you know, from local, state and federal resources, and that's through working with entities like the Housing Authority or Chaffee Housing Trust or the COG partners that I mentioned earlier. Super high level brief summary of how complex affordable housing development is. But I hope that the that that can help you understand the ask from private market developers of lowering those prices and what that means on the backend on how they can make their business model work. And how and how we as the public can partner to help fill that gap. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or field any comments.
Philip had his hand up. Becky, I appreciate going through kind of that perspective of what it takes to develop and if you're trying to hit certain price points, what that entails. I'm curious what your thoughts might be around. You know, there's acknowledgement that the the private development, there's a return on investment there. There is a net gain assumed in that, otherwise. One would just have to be doing it out of the goodness of their heart and a passion for it, which there's probably that out there in some sometimes. But I'm curious, I I still think that there is a level of profit being made, especially locally, that could also be a give in this whole equation too. And that that's a tough one to talk about because, you know, who who am I to say that ten percent return is good, but thirty percent is bad.
Right.
I'm not going down that path necessarily, but I see a lot of local gives without a lot of partner gives and in terms of that developer. So one of the models that we've been talking about with the Carbonite Street is if if you're going to entertain receiving land donation for this, we've got to see your numbers. We've got to see you prove what your return on this investment is and is that reasonable to us? So you're kind of opening up your 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 numbers to the public in essence. So I'm just curious, what, how to, how does that come across to you? And is that something that gets considered in this as well?
Sure. Absolutely, it does. Within every pro forma, there's a line item for a developer's fee. Some of the low income tax credit properties, in fact, I would say most of them, the lower the AMI level of the properties, the more likely this is, that developer fee gets deferred. And so the developers usually aren't paid that fee for five, ten years perhaps. And so the the fee that should have been paid to the developers during that first five years goes back into the net operating income to pay off the debt while it's the biggest. And once that debt gets paid down, then the developer starts getting their fee. So that's really unique to low income tax credit development. They're in it. One, there mean, there's low income in the title, so they have to kind of show that they're that they're doing things in good effort. But also they're in it for at least fifteen years, if not thirty years, so they have the time to play that out. When we talk to market rate developers, typically their turnaround time is much shorter. Philip, I agree completely that if the public is putting something into a project, then we want to see where it lands in the pro forma spreadsheet. I think it's completely reasonable to ask to see that. I'll also tell you that there's going to be two pro formas, one that they use internally and one that they share publicly, which is fine because we probably don't want to see how much each toilet costs and like all of the line items, but to see it truncated so that you can see where the soft costs are, the hard costs are, where the income comes in and and where it's going to go, I think is part of it. Another strategy that some housing authorities have used in the past is if the housing authority brings financial resources or land donation, what what have you to the project, that the developer fee gets split and a portion of it goes back to the public entity that helped so that they can help the next project as well. So that's another way of looking at it. It's it's a great conversation. I do think, however, in the performance that I've seen, the market, well, if we're trying to reach affordable rents, that developer fee is a pretty slim margin for the amount of headache that it takes to go through this process. It's not all that big. And I mean, it is, but relatively speaking. And it's important to remember too that a development can take five years before it comes to fruition. So that first five years is all out of pocket for the developers and needs to be recouped later. So when you do see those numbers and you do see developer fee and it is quite large, just keep in mind that it is also paying back those four years that led up to that point to get the development off the ground. It feels strange to be saying these things. It sounds like I'm a little bit advocating for the development community. But I think it's really important that we understand the reality of the business so that as we intervene and inject into these conversations. so that as we intervene and inject into these conversations, we're coming from a place of realism instead of a lot of hopes and dreams, right? Um, I'll also tell you though, that the Salida Housing Development Corporation had a low income tax credit developer on deck to develop a four acre parcel. Uh, we just severed ways with them because we never could see a pro forma. Didn't like how that felt, bringing, bringing the four acres to the table and asking them to help develop it. We, we elected to part ways instead. So I think it's a very reasonable thing to ask. Uh, uh, don't expect the full pro forma. But the, the big ticket items, I think it's, or the, the collapsed budget categories is very appropriate to ask for and look at.
Great.
Yep. Good question.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I, I love the way it was presented.
Oh.
I really did.
Thank you.
It's very understa- understandable.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I would encourage you to go to that link at the beginning of this and, and play with it yourself because you can add in donated land and see what that does and you can, you know, watch the blue line move. You can, you know, add in a longer timeline. They say, say it takes too long to, to get it approved through the development process. You can see that, that budget shrink. So it's really, it's a pretty impactful tool when you're trying to understand in totality from where tax credits play in and other public injected equity plays in. So I'd encourage you to play with it. It's fun.
That it's not in our packet. Can we, could ask it?
Yeah, well, sure.
I'll just, I'll just reiterate what Norm said basically, and I'll take it all on me. Thanks for dumbing that down. It makes it so, so simple to see when it's presented that way. Otherwise, when you start talking AMI and this and sixty and a hundred, you're all over the boat. What, what are you talking about?
And even I think that continuum that I offer, it makes sense to me because I'm in it up to here every day. But that's a lot of numbers and colors and lines on one page.
Well, I was going to go there that Jack is really in trouble because after the water presentation, in this, it's starting to sound like Charlie Brown's teacher. So Jack, I, man, I don't know.
I appreciate that.
It's got a lot of pictures for us.
Here I have a picture.
Yes, good. Go ahead, Deb.
Yeah, I was, great presentation. I like how everything was presented. I really kind of see, I don't know if there's more of a question or a comment, but I really see the affordable housing, like sixty percent AMI and below. It's, it's, it's really helpful to get the rents to people to help them afford rents. But I really would love to see a way to help people get more home ownership. I think it's a super hard to get homeownership in this, in this town right now, specifically for, you know, it's just a service industry folk and the workers here in town. Um, it's also, you know, I, we have a lot of land, you know? If we could do things with land or shared equity homeownership to help people with down payments and, uh, uh, the price of homes, I think that'd be a great thing, you know? Rent is only a thing that people, people pay their rent and it just goes month to month and it doesn't go to anything. And I think it'd be super important to try to push homeownership because that's what keeps people here and keeps people in the valley. So I don't know how we go to that. I see Habitat doing a lot of that work, but, uh, any way we can get people in homes and affordable, I see that as a win. So that's my comment on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. And, and I, I, I also appreciate our partners that are doing that homeownership work. You mentioned Habitat for Humanity and Chaffey Housing Trust is another. So is the, um, upper Arkansas area council of governments and the Northwest Colorado Council of Governments. It's, that's a hard nut to crack to get homeownership below sixty percent AMI. Where we're seeing, and it's, I, I've not seen it a lot in Colorado. We're seeing it more in larger cities like Seattle and Portland that have really been sitting in this crisis for some long time. And, and what that homeownership often looks like is condominiums that are very, very small. Um, and then the HOA fees are capped, so they don't increase to price people out of those condominiums. And they're usually bought cooperatively as well. So you, you own your condo and everybody else's. It's a very complicated model, um, but it seems to work in those metropolitan areas. And I think it is something we could explore in Chaffey County. The key is achieving the, the density that allows for that model to work. When I say small units, I mean six hundred, four hundred square foot units or less. Just pretty tiny to own.
Tiny house. Tiny house.
But they own them and it's happy and it's, and it's safe and it's secure. So thank you. I appreciate that, that input.
Thank you, Devin. Anybody else?
I just want to say, thanks so much for great presentation and going through that echoing what everybody else is saying. But I appreciate that because it takes me a little bit to break down those numbers as well. So having it spelled out a little bit more is helpful as I know anybody else that's listening in, you know, might also appreciate that breakdown like you did. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I will, will, um, I'll make that link a hyperlink and ask Philip to distribute it to you. I apologize if I wasn't prepared in time to get into your packets tonight.
Perfect.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tough one to follow, Jack. Central Colorado Regional Airport, twenty twenty-one review.
Even Mr. Mayor, trustees, guests, thank you for the opportunity for us to present our twenty twenty-one year-end review and highlights of activity and operations. Tonight, we'll, it's, uh, we'll go through the slides. It's going to be, my portion will be a lot of, uh, pictorial part. And then, uh, Chandra, our operations officer, will bring it, tie it all together with financial numbers and operational numbers. So we just go to the next slide and you can see the agenda. My part and Sean will take over for your ops, uh, revenue and marketing. And that, that'll pretty much tie everything together. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So the overview of the airport is a general aviation airport. It is, there's no tower. It's an open airspace, so anything that can get in the sky can pretty much fly in our airspace. Owned by the town of Buena Vista. We're enterprise business, so we are trying to be economically self-sufficient. Our income revenues mostly come from testing, helicopter testing, jet activity, fuel sales. But we do get funding from the town, county. We get a lot of funding from the government agencies such as CDOT, FAA in the form of grants. In fact, we're going to get some money this year, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Also, the airport, your airport sits on about a hundred and eighty-four acres of land with eighty-three hundred feet of runway. This is significant because it allows us, you see in the bottom corner there, to cater to larger jets that some of the other airports like Salida and Levalle can accommodate because we do have a larger runway. And we also have quite a big air hangar that we can put aircraft indoor in the winter months. Excellent. So this is our vision. Let you read that and while you're reading that, we have three main things that we need to do to help accomplish our vision. In the next slide, you'll see goals. One, we need the infrastructure to be able to do this. We want our terminal, fuel islands up to date. And we want hangar facilities and all that will help us accomplish our vision. And next slide, you'll see goals. And our first goal and is our primary goal is safety of operations. Especially in the summer months, we get very busy there and it takes a lot of training for our guys to, you know, to be able to manage aircraft and operations, a lot of activity around the airfield. Uh, our other goal is to support high altitude testing. As I might have mentioned, this is a, a main revenue stream. So we want to encourage child to testing and keep it, keep it coming to this airport. And in order to keep all of that going, we need to maintain and develop our equipment and infrastructure. So we want to maintain what we have and you'll see the, you can see the runway there. We just did that in twenty twenty-three refurbished it. So we want to keep that plus our building as well as develop new infrastructure. And number three, we wanted economic vitality. So we want to align ourselves with the vision of the town of Buena Vista as well as be our self-sustained and make economic. And we want to follow the trends and new technology to help, you know, generate new income in the, you know, and forward of the operation, forward operations. Next slide, please. And our personnel. So Sean, myself, I'm retired military. I'm the airport manager and Chandra is our operations specialist. We're the two full-time people at the airport. Uh, I, like I said, I came from military operation. I started as line tech. Chandra comes from working in the private industry, doing a lot of marketing, telecommunication, or tele, yeah, telemarketing technology. So she's, uh, and she's a great asset for the airport. I think I've kind of missed that boat. I'm a little starting to get flung into for technology, but she brings that to the table and helps us with, especially with the modern marketing that we have to do now. We're moving away from paper product to no digital. Next slide. So we have two part-time individuals, both Tad, Larry and Randy are veterans and they spent time in the Air Force. Tad retired as an air traffic control, so he has a lot of knowledge of air operations. And Randy joined us a few years ago in nineteen. He retired from the, uh, the prison system up here in this town. Uh, next slide. So that's our staff, but we don't do it all alone. We have a lot of support right from the town of yourselves, the trustees, as well as the town. But we also rely on the air advisory board to help us plan long-term vision and give input on what we want to do in the future. Uh, where there are seven voting members and with, allows two alternates. Right now, Dan Cartwright is, uh, the new chair, just recently voted in as the new chair for the air advisory board. Next. In two thousand nineteen, we brought Dibble on board to be our air consultant for the airport. They handle and consult and plan all the major airport projects. For example, in twenty twenty, we just did the runway rehab rehabilitation. And then coming up this year in twenty-two and twenty-three, we're going to be doing apron refurbish and rehabilitation. And Dibble will be, uh, the lead consultant in planning on that. As well, we have FAA and CDOT to help us with a lot of our doctrine, uh, how to, you know, keep in line with all the urging doctrines and things we have to do as well as helping us with ma- maintenance. Example, we have the AWAS, which is a weather system. And our equipment, CDOT is a big player to help us purchase that and maintain that. Uh, you can skip that slide. So the next few slides, a few pictures of what we've been doing over the course of the year, the first quarter, January to March. We always seem to start out with snow plowing. As last year, I mentioned earlier in my report, we had, uh, testing. And then we're starting to see in the winter months, especially it's, uh, some of the cargo activity. And I think this is due because the weather that we have here, we're sort of in a valley of anana belt. Plus we have a long runway, so we get aircraft and come in with heavier payloads as opposed to say try to get the Levalle and other higher altitude airport. So next. Okay, in the second quarter, we start to increase our activities. It's nice weather. Uh, down in the bottom right, you'll see a new sign there, aviation fuel, afu. We moved from world fuel to afu. This allowed us to take advantage of contract fuel, which gives a better price to jet activity. And I think it has contributed to greater activity that we've been seeing. Next. Uh, peak season, middle of summer, there's just about when you'll see all kinds of activity, jets, helicopter, military, all kinds of different planes coming in. And this is traditionally when we have our events as well as testing. Next slide, please. So we round out the year at the last and we still had some testing going on this year, which was very fortunate. Uh, we were lucky enough to get our building, uh, resurfaced. We were having some major leaking, uh, cracks in the, we got a snuggle, found a contractor, did a fantastic job there. Uh, complete parachute solutions down at the bottom. They've been coming for the last three years, testing their parachutes for high altitude operations and training. And the second year now, we've hosted the story time for preschool, uh, and coordinated with the BV library. So that's pretty much our whole year. We, in a, in a quick summary, I did mention testing. So here's the testing up in the top corner. We left, we had the Apache helicopter come in in January. This was a British, uh, they were testing for the British Navy, the wiper systems and, and windscreen cleaning because they want to try and put these on their carriers. Uh, down in the last two bottom, you got the Augustals coming in. The orange one is packed full of equipment. They do all their data mining on that. And then a few months later, they retrofitted to Air Force standards. And it's the same helicopter, but this is the helicopter that the Air Force is going to use to replace the Huey. So as far as you watch those old Vietnam movies, that's the Huey that used to fly around. This is the helicopter that's going to replace that for the US Air Force. Okay, next. And we're still seeing military operations, a lot of various aircraft and hope that trend keeps up. Next. When air events, we have the hats barbecue that came in. Now hats this year wasn't as prevalent as in the past. I think we can equate that to COVID. They were just like everybody else. They had to scale back. A lot of their clients that have hats are international, Italians, Germans, so they could come to, you know, the US because of COVID. But also I think, uh, from the drawdown in Afghanistan because their mandate for hats is to teach helicopter how to fly in mountainous areas. So we're not in Afghanistan. So I think we're seeing a bit of an impact on that. The barbecue itself though went well. We had a hundred and twenty plus folks and sold over five, six hundred gallons of fuel. So it was a good event. Now the flying, we had, this is the first one we've had in many years. Well, the first one since I've been here. I think it went pretty well. We, uh, had over three hundred people attend. You can see the various aircraft and, uh, pretty cool cars. We sold over thirteen thousand gallons, thirteen hundred gallons of fuel. And, and we had over forty aircraft come and visit. So it was a good event. I think we're going to try this again. This was in August. It was quite, uh, quite a, um, challenge to try and do everything in August. I think we'll probably push this event into September, maybe later in September, maybe capture a bit of the lead, you know, changing of the leads, something that we'll discuss. All right. We added this year just to show what, uh, what these folks do, like our ground crew, the line techs. This is their daily, uh, what they do daily. They test the fuel, fuel aircraft, move aircraft around. So this requires specific training that we have to maintain and goes to one of our goals. First goal, safety of operation of the airport. Uh, so we, we, uh, pay particular attention to especially our fuel quality and, and the safety around aircraft. Next. Along with that, we try to be as self-sufficient as we can. We do get a lot of support from the town and public work in particular, like we have mechanical issues. But we try to fix a lot of the equipment ourselves, uh, move heavy women and do our own snow plowing, host events. Just to try and, you know, because I know the town and everybody else is quite busy and we, we try to look after ourselves as much as we can. But we do get a lot of support from the town. And so this, I just wanted to show my last slide. Uh, just the kind of aircraft and activity that come and go in this airport throughout the year. Uh, the last board of trustees meeting, I was asked how big a planes come in and why are we getting the bigger planes? So I just wanted to throw this in here, like up in the top left corner. These jets up here are typical of what we call our larger jets. They're thirty to sixty thousand pounds of aircraft, like a small airliner. Down in the bottom right corners are typical small jet. Um, and, and then of course, in between you get everything that comes. The big, so what of this, I think we're seeing the bigger aircraft. I think it started with COVID, you know, big money wants to get out of big city. So they're, they, you know, small town, Colorado, mountain towns have been discovered. In particular, Buena Vista, it's got all the activities you want, outdoors, great environment, friendly atmosphere. Lots of amenities here. So I, I, I do believe that's a major reason why we're starting to see these aircraft. As, as well, um, we're in a sweet spot as far as an airport. We're at eight thousand feet, bit high, but not too high that we can have bigger aircraft, bigger payloads. But with that eighty-three hundred foot runway, which is the largest runway in the area, these aircraft can come in here, like these large jets can, cannot go in this light. And they have a real problem getting up the Levalle because now you're getting too high. So that's part of the reason we're So that's part of the reason we're seeing the activities. That's I think the end. So um it's a bit quick because I wanted to give you time for Shandra to get into the operations and the finance. And she'll pull all this together and you'll see why all these aircraft are making a difference at our, at our. So if you have any questions, I will turn it over to Shandra.
A random, well, not kind of random. How long is the runway compared to like Aspen and um I guess Vale? Are they, out of curiosity?
Aspen's a bit longer than ours, but not a whole lot. We are definitely a very long runway. There's this wider, so it can handle, we're seventy-five feet. But our runway is very, uh, is quite large. Aspen is a bit larger. I think we're within the mountain areas. We're about the fifth longest runway in Colorado. So it does help. As a matter of fact, one of the reasons we are here is we are the overflow for Aspen. So when Aspen gets too crowded, too weathered out, they, any airplane to fly to Aspen can come to here.
It's actually what I was, I was wondering if we are receiving some of this stuff from over there as well.
A lot of times they do, and especially we have, it's a lot cheaper to park your plane. So an air crew will stay in hotels here as opposed to trying to hotel in Aspen. Why, you know, the multimillionaires go skiing for a weekend, the crew and the plane will stay here and then go back to Aspen and pick them up.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
Operations.
Thank you guys so much for giving us a chance to kind of jump into uh showcasing the airport a little bit and all the fun we have. We do have fun. Um, it is hard work, but we try to have fun and be safe at the same time. And so I appreciate your time. I'm just going to jump right in and I put a lot of colors in my slides, so hopefully everybody can stay awake. I know it's a lot of numbers. Um, the most important thing to take away from this slide is going to be that increased decrease column on the right-hand side. Um, these operations numbers, this is the report that you guys see um every month from Jack. And so this is just the year-end culmination of that. Um, again, the important numbers, the increase and decrease on the right-hand side. A couple I want to point out, um, about a third of the way down, you'll see that jet and turbine aircraft traffic. That's a plus thirty-nine percent increase over last year. Um, a couple rows down, you'll see the total persons using the airport is a plus thirty-four percent increase over last year. And then all the way towards the bottom, you'll see that total ops over twelve thousand five hundred pounds. And those are those big jets that Jack's talking about. Um, huge jump in that eighty percent increase. Um, and you'll see those particular numbers really reflected um in the charts as we look at them with fuel increases and that kind of thing. Okay, this slide, most of these slides have both years. They have twenty twenty and twenty-one on them. Um, I try to do twenty twenty on the left. And what this slide represents is just the general revenue. I mean, what that means is it's our non-fuel revenue. So this doesn't include any fuel at all. And the way I've broken it down is just so we can see the difference between what testing revenue offers and then general revenue offers. You'll see the ratios are about the same for both years. It's about half and half. It shifts a little bit. Um, but what has increased is that revenue from twenty twenty was about eighty-four thousand. And then in twenty twenty-one, it jumped up to a hundred and one thousand. And um on that next slide, we'll break down kind of what that means, what the general revenue. Um, this is non-testing revenue and it's non-fuel, so it doesn't include some of those larger numbers. Um, twenty twenty on the left, twenty twenty-one on the right. And what you'll see, what I kind of want you to take away from that is that about seventy-five percent of our general revenue comes from these long-term ground leases, um, our long-term hangar leases, and then our executive hangar rent. Um, and I think what's important about that is ground leases and hangar leases tend to be our local-based aircraft. Um, whereas executive hangar rent tends to be our transient aircraft. And certainly our local guys can rent our executive hangar, but um it's typically transient aircraft. And then that remaining twenty-five percent is everything from room rentals and not parking, um, landing fees and things of that nature. Um, next slide. Okay. So now we are on to fuel cell comparison. And this is not only a comparison um of both years, but it's also a comparison between our fuel types. And so the blue represents our Jet A, which is our, our larger aircraft, our jet and turbine aircraft. And then the red represents our hundred lowlights, so our smaller piston aircraft, the little guys. Um, and you can see there's quite a dramatic difference um in the amount of gallons that we pump, as you would expect, because the aircraft are bigger. Um, so the truth is that we actually get um a lot more smaller aircraft. We just pump more fuel into the larger aircraft. That's what that shows. Um, the ratio has changed a little bit from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Um, Jet A was about seventy-two percent of our fuel cells um in twenty, and then it's jumped up to seventy-six in twenty-one. So this slide is strictly um our Jet A fuel cells. And why that's so important is because it is a huge part of our revenue. And so I actually put three years on this slide because there's quite a dramatic shift pre-COVID to COVID in twenty twenty and then to this year. So first we'll look at the blue, which is twenty nineteen and pre-COVID. And you can see that about twenty-five percent comes from military aircraft, twenty-five percent comes from testing aircraft. And that remaining half was actually our private jets and charters. Um, during COVID, as would be expected, um, operations dropped. So you see those drops in red. But it dropped quite considerably for testing and for military aircraft. Our private jets and charters dropped a little, it decreased, but not too much. Um, and so then this year, this last year, which is in green, um, the non-testing revenue uh military aircraft on the left dropped even more considerably. Um, our testing aircraft stayed about the same as it did last year. And then our Jet A sales for our private jet and charter really kind of bumped up to culminate in that final total up at the top in green, which is about two hundred and forty-one thousand. So that was the total Jet A fuel cells for twenty twenty-one. Okay, so on this page, we're going to show two things. Um, the total airport revenues at the top and I'm going to bounce back to that. But right below that, I kind of wanted to show you the breakdown, um, the itemized list of when these testing teams come. That Jack was talking about Boeing, Agusta, Aspen, Leonardo. Um, when they come, these are the services um that they require and the products from us. So twenty twenty on the left, twenty twenty-one on the right. Um, and you can see they were pretty similar. We, we ended up at about seventy thousand um total testing revenue for both years. But the way they're broken down is a little bit different. Um, but what I want to draw your attention to is kind of those larger items. Um, the bigger revenue, the bigger ticket items, um, and those tend to be the executive hangar rate. It's rent, um, it tends to be the room rentals. And then down towards the bottom is our fuel cells. They use a lot of fuel. That's what they're here to do is burn fuel. So those are going to always be the bigger items. Um, so basically all my slides have kind of been working towards this bigger number, sorry, go back one, um, at the top in the red circle. So that's kind of the magic number um that we've been working towards is to show you, this is everything. This is testing revenue, it's fuel sales, it's everything. So last year we were at about three hundred thirty-nine thousand, I'm sorry, twenty twenty. And then last year, um, increased quite a bit actually, bouncing back from COVID at four hundred and thirty-three thousand. So I feel pretty good about that. Um, another thing that we track that's really important is estimated economic impact for the town. And we, this shows two years, um, and there's going to be a similar slide following this. And the reason that is, is because we break, we break this down into two separate demographics. Um, and the reason we do that is because the airport testing teams, we have a much better handle on um what they're doing when they're here. We work with them daily, um, we talk to them. We know what lodging they're staying in, that they're eating here. Um, so we're, we're a lot more confident, I would say, in these numbers than our airport visitors. But you can see that the estimated impact, and this is just our testing teams again, about a hundred and seventeen thousand um estimated economic impact, not just for the town, I mean, it's for the area. It's Salida also, it's Pontius Springs, I'd say for the county. But the next slide. Quite a larger number, as would be expected, simply because um there are way more airport visitors than there are testing teams that come. So that number, again, it represents the lodging. Um, we have, we've developed a basically um formula over the last couple of years that we're using. And that's based on um per diem. It's actually like a federal per diem. Um, and then by speaking with local business owners, we kind of get an idea of the rates that they're charging for lodging and things like that. And so we have that plugged into this algorithm. That way we have a standard measurement um from year to year. So we can kind of track how that increases. Um, we feel that these numbers are pretty conservative. And I say that because there's a lot of times in the summer that we're so busy, we can't tick every single person. We're not tracking every single person that comes in and that happens probably half the year. So we're missing, you know, weekend, um, I'd say foot traffic mainly. We're really good at tracking aircraft traffic, but we miss a lot of foot traffic um on the weekends particularly. So this is really conservative, I feel, but it's really important to track. And I think over time, um, we'd like to actually add a couple more statistics if we can, specifically rental vehicles, recreation, just get better about asking people what they're doing and that kind of thing. I know it's hard to quantify, but we're trying it. Um, last slide. So this is how we market at the airport. Um, we have found, um, Jack and I over the last couple of years that we don't really need to do much or any print marketing. Because once the pilots and the crews, once they're here, they're already here. They, they want to look at us on their smartphone. They use tablets um to make flight plans. They don't really want magazines or newspapers or anything like that. They just, they want to look at pictures of the airport. Um, and they want to check the weather. So we've kind of moved this online presence strategy. Um, and we accomplished that in a couple of ways. We have a website um that we're in control of and we update, we keep it updated. So we can manage that on our timeframe. Um, we also have a few social media streams, mainly Instagram and Facebook. And then we also do um a lot of targeted, it's not exactly advertising, it's more an online presence. Um, and we do that through airplane manager, um, air nav and flight aware. And that's because that's where pilots go. That's where they go to get their information. And so that's where we want to show up. Um, we also have on that right-hand side, we have a really, a pretty robust um Google business profile. And that's because pilots want to see pictures. They want to map and see where we're at. They want to leave us comments. They want us to reply. They want to ask questions. And so I think we found that it's a good interface with people to use Google Business um as that tool. Um, something really important, um, when we began our relationship with Afuel, um, in March of this year is our fuel provider. We gained some access to their um marketing resources. And what that meant for us this year was we could work with their marketing team um to develop. Basically, they developed our um, our digital media for our flying for us. And so that was a really fun collaboration and we got a really professional looking product that we were able to make flyers from and post online and share with people and add our QR code. And I think it worked really well. Um, and that was done free of charge for us as our partnership with them. So that was actually pretty enjoyable. And I think that's my question page.
Non, how much, how much effort is made on a gallon of fuel?
Oh boy, we have spreadsheets that will tell us exactly that because of our learning process that we have.
Is I'm curious what we pay for the fuel.
Absolutely.
And how much we make off of it.
We use the data that they have to go directly into our budget. So that margin for both the low lead and the Jet A, if we, if we budget us selling a certain amount, it automatically pulls our expenses up for purchasing the fuel. So they have done a fantastic job breaking down the data so that our, our budget is pretty well informed in terms of revenue and expenses on that. But the margins are getting tighter, I will say that.
Really have dropped considerably over the last eighteen months and um we don't make much on hundred low lead. We make considerably more on Jet A. It's one of our larger profit sources and larger revenue sources.
Yeah, the um, so the one hundred low lead is your small private plane. I mean, those folks just don't want to spend a lot of money, just like anybody else.
That's the true.
Jets, you know, these, the companies, I mean, it's not a big deal. So we can, we can up the margin on jet fuel a little more than we can on this small aircraft. But also this last year, uh, or a year and a half, we really seen a spike in prices. Uh, two years ago, I might have been paying what uh two eighty or something a gallon for one hundred, oh, that we're paying over four dollars now. So it's, and then I, I have to add, and we have to pay a tax on that when we receive it. I got to pay a tax when I deliver, I'm going to plus credit card fees a week. We do add that and to figure out, okay. Say a four dollar, four dollars to buy the fuel plus tax plus fees, then we add a margin on top of that. You know, to try and stay competitive as well. You can't just, you know, you can't just use pure math. You have to stay within the
Yeah.
The, you know, a competitive, like we're a small airport, so we have to stay around with Landville, Salida, some of these other airports are charging. Two out of, out of line. Or that's why jet fuel is our big revenue source. Push that price up just a bit more.
It's a tricky algorithm.
We definitely can, you know, anybody's into it, I can show you the next uh meeting and show you the numbers we're using on that.
I was, I was just curious.
Yeah, we're, any, that was kind of the quick and dirty. Anything you want to delve into more or any questions? I'm always happy to take emails, phone calls, site visits. We can talk at length.
I don't know, Mayor, they did a good job following.
Yeah, they do.
That was brutal.
They're good.
Didn't go mama, mama. There's one of those first slides where that shows a cloud, looked like a UFO.
Yeah, it's a UFO.
It is you. Anything that flies is an opener.
Thank you guys so much for your.
Very good. Uh, question Philip and, and I can remember back in the day, Joel remembers this too, subsidy. Where approximately, how are we now doing that through budget? What's?
Yeah, good, good question. Um, cost increases have, we, a few years ago, we were break even on the operating. Um, cost increases um have gone up a little bit since then, as you all know. So we're, we transfer about forty thousand from the general fund to cover opera, all the operations of the airport. Um, and then what we do is we add to that to support small capital or grant match for large capital projects. So, so this year it was about forty thousand plus.
Oh. Grant management, this year's around seventy-three hundred dollars.
Yeah, so we, plus we have small, small capital projects in the budget. So that, uh, a few years, I mean, ten years ago, when we were talking about this, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand.
So I, you know, I want to say kudos for operating, plain and simple, for what has happened at the airport since I first took a position. And the comment was, it'll never break even. You know, way, I don't know what you call break even, but that's pretty darn close.
We're getting there every year.
Yeah, and I think that it's a direct reflection on you people out there right now. Definitely. Thank you very much, Jack, Sean. Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda. Is a public hearing. It's a continuation of the updates to the Unified Development Code. Consider approving amendments to the UDC related to. And only in this um public hearing at this point, related to small multifamily dwellings and. Create a small lot, single family residential district, R one point five zone district. So I will open the public hearing. Staff, brief.
Yes, good, good evening.
Brief recount of how we got to this point.
Yes, thank you very much, um. On the, on the screens, we're going to walk through a bit of a presentation to um, I go back to. The basics on these uh. Were amendments, two of which are up for your uh consideration and decision as it was your direction last time, so. Um as you remember, uh we're listed here, um the two remain are the ones that we are going to um ask for your decisions on. Um, the third and fourth ones are, um we're presenting a couple of changes that we've contemplated. Asking for a little bit of feedback and then we bring it back um in public here next meeting. As a reminder, um when we looked at amending the UDC, these are the criteria that we. Sure, you're complying with. If we're making decisions that are outside these criteria, we open ourselves up to um all sorts of uh questions, so. Uh keep these in mind, uh principally among them, that first one is it consistent with a comprehensive plan? And you all are familiar with the rest, so we won't um dwell here. As we, as um the mayor uh Lacy mentioned, our first topic tonight is. Um, the amendment offering an exemption to certain small multifamily projects. So on the left, in general, on these slides, you will see more or less either rationale and or the current state, on the right, you will see. Other, either the proposed or other kind of goal type information. So currently, three and four unit buildings must go through a site plan review process. Um, as you might remember, in our UDC, a site plan review is distinct from subdivision is distinct. Other processes that we have, so it does create um additional consultant time for the applicant, additional staff time for us. Different additional consultant time for our engineer and our plan reviewers. Um what we're proposing with this amendment, as you recall from last meeting, is the ability to exempt certain. Uh small multifamily projects from the site plan requirement. Um and really what we're saying is if there's currently. Infrastructure in place where they would like to build this project, i.e. sewer and water. Um that there's no, we would like to be able to exempt them from that site plan review requirement and it. Give them the ability to go straight into a building permit. So there would still be submitting plans, we'd still be seeing what they're going to um build, but because infrastructure is there. You would offer the exemption from that process, therefore saving both town, time and money and application time. So the why behind this, um on the right. Want to refer right back to a comprehensive um plan. Me, we are encouraged and asked in our comprehensive plan to encourage a diversity of housing types. And to identify and eliminate regulatory roadblocks. Uh we hear over and over from uh local developers that there are steps in our development review process that are burdensome. To development, now many of those steps are very necessary, some of them are not, and this is one of them. This is one of those arenas where we can apply some common sense and say, well, the purpose of a site plan review in a large part is to do the engineering. Required for public improvement, those public improvements are already in existence, um do we need to require them to go through this process? Um and, you know, going back to the the comp plans, it's to get more of these, these types of housing units. If we can lower the regulatory hurdles uh to these small multifamily projects, hopefully we'll see more. Next slide shows uh the, the zone districts um where multifamily, small multifamily um. Developments are currently allowed, I'll note that the MU one district, it does require a special use permit, we're not trying to change that. Um in the MU two and our three, it's a use by right, so this just gives you a visual representation of around town. Where could you see these types of projects come forward? Short and sweet, I'm trying to keep it to the point here, uh obviously, we're more than open to questions. Um but we do ask um that if you are in agreement with this idea, we've prepared it as a separate ordinance that we would ask for your approval on.
Thank you, uh clarifying questions for staff?
What about gas lines and electric lines?
So gas and electric, um when, when you submit for a building permit, you're required to have will serve letters from those providers. Saying that they can, they can will serve you. And then beyond that, it's a requirement of the applicant to work with Subricero or Atmos Energy to actually coordinate the construction of that infrastructure. So we do verify that those utilities are able to serve the site. That's not necessarily in our purview to require the infrastructure engineering side of that.
Other questions, clarifying questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, I open this portion of the hearing up to public comment. If there's anybody who would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand in chat or press star nine if you are on the phone. Anybody here? Like to make a comment? Doesn't seem like it, anybody there, Philip?
I don't see anyone, Mayor.
Hey, thank you, I close this portion of public comment. Trustee interaction thoughts? Motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve ordinance number four, series of twenty two.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, will be for discussion. We'll call blow, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you all very much. Next item is another public hearing. This is uh the same, it's continuation of the updates. This is ordinance number five, series twenty twenty, and ordinance amending certain protection to sidos seven, eight, sixteen. Municipal code creating small lot, single family residential. But does that look the same as the other one? Oh, that one was multifamily, I'm sorry, this one, single family residential, thank you. Oh, the public hearings.
Thank you, yes, um so while the, the text change or the site plan exemption. For small multifamily is a very minor tweak in UDC. This in comparison is creating a pretty large option. So right up front, I want to say that um staff is not proposing to rezone any current properties. Um, this is the creation of a new zone district, R one point five, that would add another option for currently owners of future landowners. Of parcels of a certain size, um gives them another tool in toolbox that would. Let us pull certain levers around how affordability and density. So it really is a big topic with a lot of detail. Um however, it's not changing the current state of any particular zone district, so I wanted to just lay that out. Currently, uh from a land mass perspective, land area R one is our most dominant zone district. Um as you all know, this is a uh single family zone district with lot areas that are relatively large. Which leads to um larger homes, it leads to fewer homes per line of infrastructure, as markets educated us. R two um has a little bit smaller minimum lot size, but a lot of the other aspects of R two are not. Very dissimilar from R one. And R three, where we all of a sudden jump to very small allowable lots and very high allowable density. Um so part of the benefit of this R one point five is to offer. An in between, something that is designed to match surrounding context. And yet offers increased density through smaller lot sizes. Um you can see on the right there, these are just a few of the aspects that are proposed, as you remember from Mark's presentation last meeting. There are a lot of details, so please feel free to ask about other details. Um, the default in our one point five is a fifty five hundred square foot lot area. So again, not very dissimilar from a default perspective to R one or R two, right there in the middle. However, the one of the key features of our one point five is offering the ability. For a developer to go down in lot area to thirty five square feet. If they dedicate land, certain portion of those increased lots to town for affordable housing. Um so there's a direct trigger in this zone district between. Offer of increased density, as you heard from Becky, which is incredibly important, they can really help develop. A return and affordable housing, i.e. town gets dedicated land. That we can choose how to address affordable housing. Um another key feature of our one point five is that largely matches the setbacks used in our one and our two. Um with the exception of of setbacks from the street, which will block right in a moment. Um but the, the thought here is, if you can picture and we'll show a map here in a moment, a couple of these eligible parcels. Are nestled in between other one, R one or R two areas, and so in an attempt to not create something. Crazy incompatible with the surrounding context, um the, the setbacks have been designed to, to really fit in. Um and as I mentioned before, we're not proposing to actively. Um so I mentioned a little bit of the why. Um, some of this is around the ability to have more units per line of infrastructure. As you referenced earlier, the, the smart cities concept of, if we're installing a block of water line. It's behooves the town to get more units out of that block of water line. Um not only does this help bring down the cost of those units, but it also helps with maintenance and on um replacement costs of that infrastructure. Um in general, the larger square foot and tones are more expensive homes, so if we can encourage smaller lot sizes. We encourage smaller homes, we will de facto encourage less expensive homes. Um, and then R one um does have minimum setbacks from streets that does not necessarily encourage an active street mentality. Um you can experience this by, by visiting some of our run districts where the houses are far off the street, doesn't necessarily encourage that. Here that um interaction that you might hope. Our comp plan access asks us to establish new zoning districts with greater density. Um and ones that address affordable housing, this does both of those in direct correlation. And then it also encourages us to establish um dimensional standards that support infill. Um and neighborhood compatibility, again, those are directly touched on this, this proposal. The next slide shows you a map. Um as Mark mentioned last time, and, and you saw it briefly in, in one of these slides. This zone district is only proposed to be eligible for unplatted parcels of five acres or more. So the intent here is not to allow. Um a two or three lots within the current R one district to all of a sudden change and then have different rules. But really, it's to take those larger parcels, as you can see in pink, um that may, that are currently either R one or R two. Um and offer them an incentive through that density bonus um to both. Decrease the lot sizes, but also address them. By no means does this map say these will be rezoned, that's not the proposal, these are ones that could come forward in the future and ask. And then they would have to go through the rezoning process. Um, the next slide is an image that Mark found um that demonstrates this active streets. Uh concept, and it really does not tell you what a neighborhood would look like in our one point five, but does demonstrate this idea. One of the setbacks that is different between our one point five and our. Is that setback from the street, we want those houses closer in order to encourage a more active street. So, um Mark, I don't know if you mind.
Yeah, I would just say, um that's actually one of the things that, you know, I'm talking with our attorneys. It's meant for properties that are over five acres or over. Um, there was some discussion about platted versus unplatted, it, I think we've taken that portion out, so it's. Properties that are five acres. So there was some testing done, and there's a large property that we think would be a good fit potentially for this, but it. Was part of a subdivision way long ago, so just trying to make sure that we're moving towards those larger. Properties where we could have more of a, a compatibility with those R one.
Any clarifying questions for staff?
Okay, um go ahead, I'll just one comment tying it all. Development, water, water development, uh always should connect in our minds going forward. Any rezoning application would go through a process of evaluation of whether the town can provide water or whether they bring water. All of that, so again, this is a, this is a tool um that can be used to achieve the things that were pointed out. Um but in no way does this say this obligates water. For anybody that says, I like that zone district.
Now, now, when you say that.
Big conversation each time.
We're still, uh if it's within town, the development is required to bring water?
Not necessarily.
Correct, correct, okay, oh, it is town discretion. Okay, okay, so it could depend on what kind of development, what size, that it did, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just to, to. Double up on what Phillip said, it, it, we're not seeking to rezone anything at this time, so. If someone comes in, they're gonna have to ask for rezoning, that rezoning comes to this board. So we'll come back every single time anyone asks to do this, the, the, this body will hear that decision after it's coming to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, uh Philip, if you would, pull up the map again. And, and the only thing I wanted to point out, the, the pink boxes, let's say, on the right side of the highway. In between the river and the highway, those are all in town. Um, yes, those wouldn't necessarily demand water be brought to the table. Now, if we went to the ones to the left. The big lots, those we could, because of where they are, no infrastructure.
For any of them, any of them.
Any of them.
Okay.
Yeah, the water dedication fee is really a fee in lieu of water dedication. So it's, it's town discretion, whether we would pursue bringing water in addition to our portfolio or. Allocating water from our portfolio. To help pay for that.
And so that would be the discretion, obviously, of the board again, um whether.
You know, depending where it laid, let's say, for example, take the pink one for this, uh throw this to the north on the right side by the highway. Um, maybe because it's close to infrastructure or it's not, or you know what I'm saying, if there's infrastructure right there, you may or may not. But if there's no infrastructure, obviously, you could say, well, you know, we need help here.
And, and you know, that would obviously be, it could be part of the discussion every zoning. It would also then come back at subdivision, and that subdivision, the preliminary plat, final plat process is the actual mechanism where that decision would get. Formalized, so in the zoning, it could be a high level discussion, well, if there is own star one point five or something else, could we? Or would we want, then the developer would come back, assuming they're doing a major.
And then the, the dedication comes, you know, the dedication of land comes into play, all of that comes into play at that same time, okay?
So this, this map is really just showing properties that are five acres or greater. So if you look about the middle to the east of the highway, to the right of the highway. Is a property that is the high school, that, that's all that's showing, I don't expect the high schools to get a secret zone because it's still high school. All this is, is five acre.
It's just showing five acre properties, okay?
This is, that's all this map is showing.
Great, okay.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes.
It was on mute, so I'm assuming.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, and I, I don't want to um weigh in and make things more complicated, but you know, it's, it's really, like you said, it's a decision for the town board to make, but. It, it isn't a matter of, well, we like this property, therefore they're not going to have to do anything with respect to water, it's really, they're gonna have to give us water or pay the fee in lieu. Um and one of the important considerations would be is how much water is, is this property actually going to need? And how much water does the town actually have available? So you know, a big giant development with a, a huge water demand, you, you, you may be saying to them, you know. Fee and lose not going to cut it, we need the water. We need the water. You know, small development, a small demand, you might say, oh, we've got enough water to serve you and therefore, you know, we'll take the fee in lieu. So I just wanted to make sure the board didn't think that people were just gonna be able to develop, you know, with no, without addressing the water.
Anything.
One way or another.
Thank you, Jeff. That's good clarification. That makes sense.
In the the process we use to make that determination is the subdivision process.
Okay.
Because we don't know if someone's proposing ten, fifty, a hundred lots. So at the time of subdivision, engineers start doing calculations first of value.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. I open this public hearing for public comment. Um, I remind everyone again, you can press star nine if you're on the phone, raise your hand in the chat box. We will recognize you to speak up. I see nothing. I close this portion of public comment. Of the public hearing. Trustees. Questions, comments?
Motion to approve ordinance number five, series twenty twenty two.
We have a motion. Iber, further discussion.
I have a comment. Hey, I just, I'm I'm really hesitant to, I appreciate the the concept. I appreciate the tool in the box. I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. I think it's great. My concern is, again, there's so much coming down the pipe with the housing study. I know the water is somewhat independent, but it's also somewhat not if 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 we. These changes in direction slowly. I I I just have concerns for the timing of it. I I I know that there's no plans currently for. This to be implemented anywhere. But I I think that by September, when the the housing study is completed and the water policy is is established, I think we'd have a. I I just wonder if our lens is gonna be different at that point. And I see no need to rush through this decision.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second. We'll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lecraezy.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Bogan.
No. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Next item, and I'm sorry, Devin. Speak up if you got something, buddy. I know.
Oh, I will.
Alrighty.
Don't worry.
Next item is, uh. Staff is introducing, and this is not public hearing, and there there is at no point at this point in time for. Uh, expectation of the board to make a decision on these, these will come back to us. This is for discussion and presentation at this point in time. Staff is introducing to the board in public the amendments proposed by the Board of Trustees for multifamily in the Highway Commercial Zone District from the January twenty fifth meeting.
My slideshow doesn't match that or scroll down.
Go down.
Do we wanna switch them? Are you okay?
Uh, we're fine, just a few.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, we're good.
So a a quick reintroduction to this topic again. I would just wanna emphasize, as you, as you mentioned, Mayor, that this is not a. A decision time, but this is a time when we are presenting back to you some, some of what we heard of our last meeting's discussion and wanting to make sure that we um either have captured sentiments and or might offer further changes next meeting when we do come back for it. So when we look at these four UDC amendments, um, each one of them is offering um an option and an incremental change that is focused on housing. And yet not all focused on necessarily affordability, but focused on on what our comp plan refers to as diversity in housing. Um, this actually has measures for both. Currently, um, on the left, uh, you can see that multifamily um projects in the Highway Commercial Zone District. Um, either small, so that's four or less, or large, five or more, must be a part of a vertically degraded mixed-use building. So the intent here is that it's a highway commercial zone district. We want businesses. But the applicability of that um means that we're not getting uh multifamily units. Because many of the lots, and we'll cover these in a moment, are not necessarily suitable for commercial activity as a part of the same building. So that means that developers are not able to make a project work. Um, and therefore, we just get nothing as opposed to. On the right, um, I wanted to just summarize the changes we made since the last meeting. So what we heard, what a primary concern was the possibility that um there could be a fourth story density bonus. In exchange for deed restrictions. We have essentially submitted that possibility. So this means if this were to get decided upon next meeting in the public hearing. Um, that if a project wants to move forward, all that family units outside of a mixed-use project, so no commercial compliance. They may do so if they prohibit the economy minimization of thirty percent. Where they they prevent more than thirty percent of those units being kind of. So the intent here is to say, we will not exempt you from that commercial requirement unless you give us something. What you're giving us is um giving up the ability to kind of minimize all of your units. The intent here is that we want additional additional units in our long-term rental market. Um, so the offer, the incentive for the developer is that they don't have to build commercial space. The thing they give us in return is that they um. We get long-term rentals. We get seventy percent long-term rental. Then, on top of that, if they want to reduce the amount of parking spots that would otherwise be required. We would ask for a deed restriction for affordability. Um, so it's sort of a a two-part idea. At a basic level, if you wanna do your project without a commercial component, you may do so. It's still a special use process, which still goes before the planning and zoning commission. So this is not a use by right. Um, but you have to limit yourself on the amount of condos you can create, therefore we get long-term rentals. If you also want to reduce the amount of parking that you have to build. We also then need additional things from you in the form of deed restrictions for affordability. So if if that makes sense, it's sort of a dual-layer proposal. All of which, again, has to still follow the special use permit process. Next slide. Again, um, we kinda covered some of the the currently, um, one thing I wanted to throw in here that I glossed over on the previous slide. Um, there's, there's talk of inclusion of um the ability for owners of or rent tenants of these units to have pets. This was included specifically because so many of the rental units on our market right now do not allow pets. And there's data to back up that this is a significant barrier for our our workforce. Um, so we 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 didn't sort of just pluck pets out of the air as like a random concept. We actually do see from the data that folks are struggling to find housing because of their pets. It's not a tangential issue that they consider pets part of their lives, of livelihood, their families. And the inability to have pets in units is causing issues for them with housing. So that's why pets is in here in the first place. So I just wanna get that out there. And and again, our comp plan, it asks us to find all appropriate methods um to create both affordable and diverse housing options. Like multifamily, which is specifically called out. Um, and then it also asks us to identify zone districts where we can attain greater density. Um, having a commercial is is a perfect example of where greater density should be attained. But there is a regulatory roadblock, i.e. mixed-use requirement that we can look at exemption. In exchange for. The following slide um demonstrates the the, on the left, the image is our Highway Commercial Zone District in pink. Um, in both maps, we've outlined properties in yellow that are examples of properties where either someone has approached us with a desire or that fit the use case well. I don't wanna offer that these are the only properties this could happen on. It could happen anywhere in a highway.
Or that these are going to happen.
Correct.
It's just the fact that.
But these, if you look at the image on the right, you can see from the satellite images that many of them are either fully undeveloped or there's a building up against the highway, like on the on the east side, we have Best Western. Um, we have TBK Bank. Um, we have Rocky Mountain Lumber. All of those have either adjacent or parcels of land behind them that are open. That really don't make sense for meaningful commercial activity because they're removed from the highway. However, that's great land for housing. It's great land for apartments. So I just wanted to provide a a bit of a grounding in in where we think, based on current folks that have, you know. Hey, I have an idea. Is most likely for this to happen first.
Code restriction on short-term rentals on highway corridor?
They are not allowed.
They are not allowed.
Lodging is obviously best western hotels are.
Yep.
But short-term rentals are not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
So again, we're not asking for a decision. We would appreciate. During your. Trustees.
Can you go back one slide to that map? Is, I can't see good enough. Would it be a possibility to end up at the stoplight with the three-story building if they bought the real estate company next to it?
At the corner of Main and the highway over here.
At the stoplight.
Coggins Building or whatever.
Yeah.
Where the Texaco was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, that whole corner is for sale at this point.
Yeah.
Well. As far as I know.
No, I guess you're right.
Sorry, trying to make sure I understand. The old Texaco building block right at Main and Highway, that's actually zoned M U M S.
Yeah. Oh, okay, because that's okay.
Third building, yeah.
It could be a three-story building under the M U M S zone.
U M S.
It's a different zone district.
Different zone requires mixed use. So if if somebody was gonna put a three-story building there and want residential units, they would have to have commercial reverse for it.
Because it's on Main.
Because of the M U M.
Yeah.
So then. And then the next lot to the left of that, where the real estate office was, now is Highway Corridor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't face Main Street.
The old Red Max building is zoned highway commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
What would that do to East Main?
In terms of having a three-story building?
Yeah. At the very start of it, right there at the stoplight.
Well, to be clear, this this would not affect that.
Yeah.
So it's because right at the stoplight is mixed-use means street district, which.
Which allows three-story anyway.
Stories and allows residential over.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
So so currently in our code, highway, commercial and mixed-use main street both have the same requirements.
Right.
You have to have commercial under your residential. What we're proposing is to essentially exempt highway offer an exemption or pathway to exemption. Where I have a commercials on this.
Right. Does it be special use?
Yeah, it'd still be a special use.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Con to plate food for thought? We'll discuss it next meeting.
I think it looks like a really interesting idea, you know, to to have some apartments in there. And like you point out on the map, there are a lot of places where there's really nothing right now.
Uh, directly north of my building, there's, well, you can see them. Uh, behind the. The pizza works, the, I mean, you just go right up that whole alley, the behind the railroad corridor.
Yeah.
There is nothing there. And it's landlocked, if you wanna put it that way. It's basically landlocked.
And we did receive some public comment going through the planning commission, and we did receive a letter from Red Jewel, and we did have some input. From a apartment builder about interest about this. Put that in the packet when we come back.
I mean, I was fortunate when I got mine subdivided way back when. That's all I can say. Other comments? We'll move on to. Item number F, staff introduction, same thing. Uh, discussion we had last meeting, and there are some proposed amendments sought by the trustees to confirm the present presentation for the public hearing. Next, S R O.
S R O, so S R O stands for single room occupancy. As a reminder, this um offered amendment would create a new use. Um, which then would be, um, you know, eligible for. Change of use applications or folks to actually start using in their their buildings in various zone districts. Again, we're not offering to apply this use proactively to any particular building, but it would become an option for folks to have in the toolbox. So currently, this is just not allowed use. Um, so it does happen in town where multiple unrelated folks who are living in the same house and renting a room. Um, sometimes seasonally, sometimes long-term. Uh, it's non non-conforming use. Um, on the face of it, you're not fairly something that we have the enforcement capability to proactively go out and try to change. Um, however, part of the benefit of having a defined use is that when somebody chooses to change their use to that. Um, we get the opportunity to ensure that the rooms that they are offering up for rent are safe. They need building codes, they have egress, um, all those various aspects. So this is a tool that allows us to ensure life safety when it is utilized, which can help non-current on forming properties become safer. Um, so that's one of the the benefits, I think, that this. Um, and then the other, the other aspect of this is that it does offer greater flexibility, both to landlords and to tenants. Um, again, this is not necessarily a housing affordability uh tool. It's a housing options tool. The primary feedback that we heard last meeting was uh discomfort with the idea of short terminals. Um, the, so far, we have contemplated simply deleting the ability for short terminals to. Um, be in the S R O use, so kind of taking it all together, they just wouldn't be allowed. Um, you all, I think, have received some written comments that will also be in your packets next meeting regarding that. Um, and so happy to kinda dive into that more. Um, next slide. Kinda going back to um the why on this, our comp plan does ask us to find diverse housing options for specific populations. So as we think about folks that might be um very different from myself or others that are looking for a long-term, maybe full house, year-long lease, stable place. Um, folks might be very interested in renting a singular room for a month, a season, um, long-term potentially. Um, and they might be really looking forward to that opportunity to interface with other folks that are in a similarly transient and or long-term um situation. Um, and then our comp plan does ask us to ensure consistent enforcement with our land use codes. So this kinda goes back to that idea that if we know that we currently have some non-conforming uses and structures in town. How can we put forward good faith efforts to ensure consistent enforcement? Um, appropriately. This would help us start to do that by by giving a definition of those uses. Um, and I I wanna just kinda come back to that flexibility piece a little bit. The the idea here is that landlords both have the options to um have greater flexibility in when and how they rent out their their rooms. But also tenants have that ability to need a room for four months and find it, maybe. Instead of being locked into a six, twelve-month lease, um, or living in a tent where they might not want to. Um, so this offers a flexibility on both sides. So that's the overview there. Mark, I don't know if you wanna add anything on this.
Um, we did have some input with the planning commission, and we'll bring that public comment that we received as well to the meeting next time, and I'm sure there might be a few people to speak on.
Clarification?
Um, I'd just like to talk about it a little bit. I was sold on the idea that we shouldn't have a mixture of um long-term and. Say Airbnb in the same structure. But these letters, I found these letters to be pretty compelling. Um, I think I was picturing it as somebody would either build or buy a house and change it into um these, uh, you know, um, single-room occupancy or um Airbnb, and they wanted to mix them so that they could. And they wanted to mix them so that they could make more money with it. But what I see in these letters is that people might be suggesting that some of the times something is Airbnb and, and sometimes it's a, a, a single-room occupancy where if you, if you forbid the Airbnb part, then you may lose the whole. I mean, the whole place may have to be one or the other. So they have to keep it as Airbnb and you lose all the long-term single-room occupancy. So, so I'm really on the fence about it. You know, partially influenced by these, these letters. So I don't know how, how you guys, whether you've thought about it more.
I, I would say this is not a public hearing, and so that should be a conversation that we have at the public hearing next meeting. I don't want to play lawyer because Jeff's in the room, but those are the kind of conversations that you should have at a public hearing.
Okay.
I, I think it's an okay comment at this stage, but yeah. For the record, it'd be great to restate, to be ready to restate your.
That, that opinion.
Process during the public hearing.
And, and at the same time, Jeff can confirm or describe, define non-conforming use as it comes forward, because that's what we're talking about right now, is those kind of things. So that would be perfect for the public hearing, that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Alrighty. Thank you very much, staff. We look forward to next meeting. Baby breath, smiles. I don't know what to say with you, all that kind of stuff. Next item on the agenda. I believe I've got the pages right here. Item D. Cancellation of the April 5th, 2022 municipal election. So the Board of Trustees approved adoption of resolution number 12, series 2022, entitled the Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Vino Vista, Colorado, canceling the April 5th, 2022 election. Staff.
Paula.
Hi, Paula.
This one's mine. All right.
Yeah.
As we all know, we had the petition process and things, and we received one petition for mayor and four petitions for trustees, which fills the vacancies and the boards were open. So that gives us the option, our two, you, the board trustees, to cancel the election and declare Libby elected as mayor, Gina, Cindy, Mark Jenkins, and Zuka elected as trustees. Or you can go and proceed to have an election.
Do we also need to decide which?
Not now. Decision was made. The candidates, Gina, Cindy, Mark, and Sue discussed amongst themselves who would have the four-year term and who would have the two-year term. And it was decided that Sue would take the two-year term. The other option was that we could do a lot drawing.
Okay.
And that would have been taking place that Wednesday of that week, but the group had decided.
Already decided, so that's the way it'll be presented in that mic. Right there it is.
That's how the resolution is working.
Great.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt resolution number 12, series 2022.
I did.
Second neighbor, further discussion?
Can I ask a question? And as to Paula, with the paperwork that we were supposed to fill out and the dates on it and stuff, if you cancel the election, do we still have to fill out the paperwork and turn it into you?
No, you don't have to fill out the campaign practices.
Any other? Roll call vote, please.
See, Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Let's do the crushing.
Yes.
Trustee Nager.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yeah.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Shortens up that meeting, right?
Does that save the town some money?
Two, about $2,000. All right.
Yeah, but we've got, we've got that in, in the bank, don't we? Just from a previous one that got.
We have envelopes in the bank.
Envelopes in the bank.
There's still the cost of the.
The cost. The cost.
Judges and bringing people in to stuff the ballots and postage and, yeah.
There you go.
So staff, thanks you very much.
Thank you all very much. Next item is trustee staff interaction. You see Jack left. Joel.
I say, I was really looking forward to seeing some yard signs up.
We don't even get to test that.
I know. No, I have nothing.
Yeah, you still can. So you still put up yard signs. What the heck? Gina, thank you, Joel.
Just thank you to everybody for all their hard work.
Hey, thank you, Norm. Dave?
Um, another weird one. Sorry, it's actually the same one. I got a, a couple of weird looks from some of you guys a couple of weeks ago when I was asking about the sales tax graph. And I think I'd like to just rephrase the question. And there's not really an answer, but we're excited to see it being so high, and we, we give ourselves kudos for it. What are we going to do when the news isn't so good? I just wanted to turn that question around just a little bit, and I know that there's not an answer, but I, I think my, my question was just more if we're going to use this data, look at data, what, you know, good or bad, is there anything we can do about it?
So acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it, okay.
I, you know, that's good or bad. Oh, wow, what happened? You know, or, oh, wow, what happened? Take your pick. You know what I mean? I mean, obviously, we're seeing outside sales or mail order, we'll call it. How that impacts our sales. I mean, you know, it, they're just different things. Go ahead.
I have just a very practical response to that is we would need to start considering changes to our budget and start scaling back and making changes. We went through that in a very panicked exercise when the pandemic started. If you remember, we actually created three different scenarios of new budgets. So I think it is a pretty serious indicator that we would need to take action if we started to see a trend, especially a very sharp trend, and we could identify reasons for that, that would justify starting to make changes. So I think there are some practical things that we would need to react to if and when that does happen.
Thank you.
Sure.
So Jeff, I noticed you lit up. What do you have for us?
No, I, I don't have anything for you. I'm just listening carefully, and I, once again, I didn't participate much, but that's usually a good sign, so.
Usually. There could be emails, I'm sure. Devin?
Yeah, I just want to keep thinking, the only thing I have is just to keep thinking about what we can do as a town for affordable housing, you know, with that discussion. I think the Highway Commercial amendment to the U D C is a great step, but I'd really, you know, like to look at in the future, the land that we have and what we can do to help people. So that's just something I'm thinking about. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Libby?
I've come to a lot of Board of Trustees meetings, first as a citizen, then as a trustee. I've gotten to watch Duff and Joel before him and all of you as trustees. And I know I've got big shoes to fill, but I feel that we're good people. You all very.
Thank you, Libby. Joseph?
Just a brief heads up, I guess. The topics for next meeting never seem to stop expanding, but are the condo moratorium that you all put into effect, I believe in August of last year. Put a halt on the conversion of any current apartments to condominiums expires on February 24th. And so staff is working on putting together a few options for you to consider. One option would be let it expire. You know, revert back to kind of free market will do its thing. One argument in favor of this is that you all did pass return rental licensing restrictions, which does have a pretty good impact on this arena of keeping long-term housing around if we're capping short-term rentals. Second option would be to extend the moratorium. And if we were going to provide that option, we'll provide some rationale for that. Potentially to allow our hot housing affordability audit, our code audit that we're barking upon to play out. See if that teases out any solutions, permanent solutions. And then, you know, the third would be maybe not desirable, but extending it into permanency. So just wanted to kind of give heads up that those options will be coming back before you next meeting.
Oh, good. I own it on. Why don't you?
I can keep going.
I know there's, it never ends, does it? Never ends. Is that what you got?
That's right.
Alrighty, thank you. Mark?
Nothing for me.
Ooh, that's scary too. Cindy?
Good work session.
It always is. I mean, I, I got to admit, it's just the groundwater never, it just never stops, and it's gotten a lot better. Got to admit, the effort staff has put into that is just taking.
And we have some really fantastic presentations tonight, too. It was just good night.
Good night. Paula, do you have anything you want to add?
I do. I'm going to tag team off with Joel's, you know, signs. He was saying that, you know, his signs. But I do want to share with you all, the League of Women Voters has reached out, and they're looking at doing maybe a meet the board night and things for where the community could come.
There you go.
Entire board, just the new people coming on and things, but meet you all. So there may still be that opportunity for that, you know, political, politic reelection buttons. Yes.
I have to zoom. You meet us every other Tuesday.
It's all good. Is that, is that it?
That's it. I haven't gone through that too. The Chaffey County Patriots have invited us to their meeting on March 11th, which is a Friday night. And I would like it if as many people on the board would go as, as are willing. I'm going to go and Gina's going to go and Sue's going to go.
This is February, right?
Yeah, it's in March.
Okay, March.
March 11th and March 12th is our work day.
Yes.
12th.
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
The morning after.
Yeah, don't stay out too late.
That's right.
Fresh minds on Saturday morning. So on that note, we, I think we might have exchanged emails on this, but we probably need to notice that.
If, if more than three are going to go, we're going to have to notice it.
And so just to be safe, maybe.
I would say to be safe.
Yeah, I told him I would put it, that it would be a public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, to be safe, let's go ahead and notice that. Jeff will like this for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, echo what trustee Swisher said. I'm really impressed with everybody's presentations tonight, the engagement and the topics. There's a lot of topics and continuation of that, but yeah, very, very pleased with progress tonight, so.
Very informative, very. I've got, I've been on the workforce center for the four county council, I guess, workforce center. And I brought up the childcare, and interestingly enough, almost the whole meeting, this last meeting, was on childcare. And we aren't alone by any means. The, actually, the numbers they posted were from Park County. They have 160, like 160 some odd jobs openings and like 15 people looking for jobs. So there are no, our impact is the same. Now, I presented the same numbers that we got from the school, saying that we had somewhere to the effect of 70 people looking for childcare. Now you take that impact and put that against the number of people, number of jobs available, people that can't go to work because they don't have childcare, childcare. It all kind of goes hand in hand. CMC does offer classes. And so if you know anybody that has even a consideration at all, CMC does offer classes. And that came, I did not know they were doing that. I don't think that information gets out nearly as well as it should. There's also, and I didn't fully understand it, and I apologize, I didn't look into it, a house bill currently, and it is for tax exemption for childcare. And so that's interesting too. So anybody, Mark, go ahead, please.
Just to follow up on that, if you remember a few years ago, we did a special use permit for a daycare home on Bray.
Yes.
When we redid the U D C, we made those permitted uses, not special uses. So we did our part to try and encourage as much as we could by making them a permitted use so that you go get your state license, meet all the requirements, you're, you can open. You don't have to come to the Planning and zoning commission or the board for approval.
Yep. And, and I mentioned that in that meeting also, that there's things that towns can do to help. It's just, it has to be done. They're just in enough out there. That's all. The other thing I noticed that, and I was approached on this, I, I apologize, it's been a month or two ago. I noticed on the fuel station tower or tanks at the airport, their signage. I was approached by somebody commenting on our water tower, how the signage is falling apart. Well, her son professionally does this as a company. It's, they had a whole, I mean, brochure of all of them, they've done all across the United States, just planting the seed. If that's something the board want to entertain sometime, it can be done professionally, not the way we got it done originally, just saying. And it will stay up there. So I can pass that information on if, you know, if we want to pursue that. That's something that could be thrown in the budget somewhere sometime. Maybe they can make a presentation, let us know dollars and cents. Obviously, the water tower done with the best. Wouldn't hurt.
Let me save money on the election.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, knew there'd be a way to spend it. We're just real good at amending budgets. I think that's all I have. We're all good. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Norm. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, Devin. Take care. Have a good night.
I'll be forward.
Thank you all. Have a good night.